And thank you for being here to those in person and also for those who are watching us live streaming. I will ask our Board Secretary to take role and establish a quorum for the record.
Thank you. President Craighead?
Here.
Member Benitez is not here right now. Member Lopez?
Present.
Member Miller?
Here.
Member Otto?
Here.
Student Member Aguilar?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And now I will ask our student representative from Wilson, Ms. Claudia Jacinto Patronia, to lead us in the pledge.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
For those of you present in the room, the Board appreciates and supports community input at our meetings. During the meeting, there will be time for the public to comment on matters on the agenda and matters not on the agenda. For those who have not already submitted a request, we have provided forms here by where the Board Secretary is. And if you wish to speak during the meeting, please fill out a form now indicating your name and the agenda item you wish to address. And I realize, Claudia, I skipped right over you, and I'm so sorry. If I could have you... Oh, wait, actually, no, not yet. I did not skip you. Good news. Okay. Let me get back to the agenda. How about that? Okay. The Board has been meeting in closed session regarding matters listed on today's agenda. The Board took action on the following items. Item 3.1, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation, the Board voted 4-0 with Ms. Lopez absent to approve the settlement in both workers' compensation cases listed on the agenda. Item 3.4, regarding public employee dismissal/release, the Board voted 4-0 with Ms. Lopez absent to suspend one employee and to release a probationary certificated administrator from their administrative position pursuant to Education Code Section 44951, effective at the end of the 2023-24 school year. The Board also voted 4-0 with Ms. Lopez absent to adopt Resolution 050124C, resolution terminating services of classified employees for lack of work and/or lack of funds. We will now adopt the agenda. Are there any changes or requests?
Booze approval?
Second.
Any discussion? I'll ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
First time here, let me see. So you can record me as being here, present. And I vote aye.
Thank you. Member Miller?
Aye.
Student Member Aguilar, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. And now we will have the introduction of our student representative from Wilson. So now is the time you can share a bit about yourself, a bit about Wilson. We are all ears.
Thank you. Good afternoon to you all. I am greatly honored and thankful for the opportunity to be here representing the students of Woodrow Wilson High School. My name is Claudia Jacinto Pastrana, and I am a valedictorian in the Wave Pathway, as well as the current ASB president at Wilson High School. A little bit about myself, this is my third year in ASB, and I have held different positions, ranging from a leadership representative, rally co-chair with my dear friend Dylan Gomez-Coraz, who made an appearance earlier this year, and most recently, senior class president. At Wilson, I am also part of our track and field and cross-country teams. I am also president of Z-Girls, a club consisting of the 25 most involved senior women on campus dedicating our focus to public service. I believe I've been a consistent student representative in our school site-based decision-making committee. Our Bruins have been nothing short of exceptional. Concluding our first semester at Wilson with a winter formal night under the Stars, and our junior class council has invited our seniors to illuminate the night at prom on June 1st. Seniors continue working diligently as we wrap up the end of the year, raising over $1,500 with the help of our senior class president, Giovanni Morio. We highly appreciate every hard-working senior, recognizing students such as our most inspirational student and also our homecoming king, Brandon Henderson. Our Pathway ambassadors took charge of our site night, taking place on February 11th. We had over 2,000 prospecting Bruins, ranging from all schools in Long Beach District, as well as a few out-of-district students. As for our sports teams, we've taken the more league title in over 16 sports, including boys' and girls' water polo, boys' and girls' swim, boys' and girls' golf, boys' and girls' track and field, boys' and girls' volleyball, surf, girls' beach volleyball, boys' tennis, and girls' lacrosse. We've even incorporated an all-athletic PE weight room, which is near completion. A ribbon cutting will take place this summer, recognizing funding done by the alumni golf tournament, the Wilson Committee, athletic teams, and Wilson ASB. Wilson has continued our well-known tradition of incorporating cultural groups on campus. Our CFJ students continue to lead professional development on campus, while our Ermanitos Unidos Club, a migrant education tutoring program, is partnering with Cal State Long Beach University Club named La Familia to branch out as Hispanic excellence group. Our Asian American Pacific Islanders Club has also prepared a night market, along with the help of our Governors of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion, Matthew Ruiz and Anthony Ruiz, gaining inspiration from Millikins on May 18th, gathering cultural festivities in the quad. We also highlight important events, not only on campus but in the Long Beach community as well. Our most recent is Denim Day, a day enabled to combat victim blaming and educating on sexual violence. Our ASB rally chairs, Valeria Antillon and Vanessa Holden, partnered with Interval House of Long Beach to educate students on campus during a lunch rally, in which spirit groups wore jeans and the Long Beach Police Department spoke out on the issue. We greatly value this tradition at Wilson and continue enforcing it on campus. Our associated student body has also agreed to add two new positions to our student government. This includes our Governors of Gold W's in charge of encouraging more Bruins on campus to participate in more school events for medallions earned at graduation. The second is a multilingual representative in charge of meeting with the head of multilingual listening and speaking sessions at school to gather qualitative data on issues felt within this demographic of students. With these positions, we hope to increase student involvement. Speaking of student involvement, our student body noticed a lack of participation earlier this year in extracurriculars such as sports, clubs, and fundraisers. To combat this issue, stemming mostly from students not exactly aware of ways to get involved, ASB created a workshop called Bruins Helping Bruins. In this workshop, which we do about once a month, students are given opportunities to speak to student representatives of specific sports groups, encouraging further engagement in school-wide functions. This has greatly improved participation in the student population, which we will continue to fortify. I could not be more excited to end the school year off with such a strong student body. Our Bruins continue to persevere through the last few months of school while incorporating school spirit throughout campus. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak out on Wilson's accomplishments, and as our well-known motto goes, at Wilson, it's always a great day to be a Bruin.
Thank you. And are there people in the audience that you would like to acknowledge, maybe somebody who's here to support you?
Yes, I do. I have our beloved Principal Ms. Caverly, as well as our Activities Director Ms. Fajar, and then a bunch of my friends that are on ASB, as well as my mom and dad.
Did you mention if you were a senior?
Yes, I am a senior.
Oh, okay. So with our seniors, we like to ask about your plans.
So my current plan right now, sorry if I cut you off, but my plan right now is to attend UC Davis. I'm majoring in biomedical engineering and on the pre-med path in hopes to become a cardiologist.
That just happens to be music to my ears because I do have a cardiologist, but we need... I mean, but we need...
But sacrifice with your cardiologist?
No, no. And do not tell him that, but we do need new blood, as it were, in that field. Yeah, never mind me. Anyhow, that's true. That is so true. So what we'd like you to do is come up here so we can do a picture. So we'll go ahead and do that now. Student representatives that come and let us know about their school communities and what they're doing personally. But we have more celebrations. And tonight, we actually have five retirees to honor. So we're going to say a few words about each retiree. We'll have them come up and shake hands, and then our Board Secretary will give them a certificate. And after we recognize all the retirees, then you'll have an opportunity to thank the people who are here to support you. So I will start by having all the retirees stand, and then one by one, we'll say a few words about you. So if I can have the five retirees kind of come to where the podium is in that area, and we will start the retiree celebration. And so each Board member has a retiree to honor on behalf of the district. And we will start with Ms. Lopez.
Okay. So I am going to ask Ms. Karen Grunst, please come forward to the microphone. And Karen has 36 years of service. She's retiring as Vice Principal of John Muir Academy, and she's being praised for being a remarkable leader who takes time to listen to students, to resolve conflict, and to motivate students to make positive choices. She's demonstrated a commitment to teacher development by regularly visiting classrooms, implementing evaluation practices with fidelity, and providing immediate and actionable feedback to teachers. Karen will be missed by the entire school community. And please accept this certificate, Ms. Grunst, for your 36 years of dedication and service to LBUSD and for your lasting contributions to the lives of thousands of students.
Thank you. And next, we'll have Mr. Otto, who will you be honoring?
I will be honoring Lisa Almer. Please come forward to the microphone. Ms. Almer, everybody knows Lisa Almer. I have been a member of the Century Club forever, and your name is revered with members of the Century Club for all that you have done for athletics at the Long Beach Unified School District for 32 years. You're retiring as the Program Administrator for the K-12 Sports Coordination, and you have, over those years, been praised for advocating for physical education and always been willing to teach anyone about the rigor and importance of the quality physical education does in a person's lives. Also for being knowledgeable, motivated, and a passionate educator who works tirelessly to perfect her craft and the craft of others to better support all LBUSD students. Please accept this certificate for 32 years of dedicated service to the LBUSD and your lasting contributions to the lives of thousands and thousands of students.
And now it's my turn to honor Kimberly San Jose on behalf of the Board and the district. So we are honoring you tonight for 36 years of service, and you are retiring as the Principal of Cleveland Elementary School. And we would like to praise you tonight for being a distinguished model for all elementary school leaders through your work and dedication as an instructional leader at Cleveland. You bring immense value to the students and staff through your leadership skills and really being a champion for our students. So please accept this certificate for your 36 years of service to the Long Beach Unified School District and your lasting contributions to the lives of thousands of students. How can we thank you for 36 years of dedicated service?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor to ask Maria Jose Carnicero to come up to the podium.[1286.71][1286.71](applause) We are honoring you for your 26 years of service to students and families in our district. Maria Jose Carnicero is retiring as a third-grade teacher at Dooley Elementary School. And we praise you for encouraging students to participate in both collaborative and independent learning practices with rigorous expectations. Yes, it can be done. And also for cultivating a sense of belonging within the educational landscape by fostering inclusive learning environments and leveraging community resources, pillars of our district. So please accept this certificate for your 26 years of dedicated service to LBUSD and for your lasting contributions to the thousands and thousands of students in our district.
Certainly not least, we have Yolanda Correa. Please come forward.[1392.30][1392.30](applause) Today, we'll be celebrating 26 years of service, retiring as a second-grade teacher at our beloved Webster Elementary School. She is being praised for being a kind and skilled teacher who cares greatly about the success of her students and knows what her students need to move forward and improve. She's also being praised for demonstrating a professional responsibility in her daily work to help the entire school community rather than just her students. We really appreciate that. Please accept this certificate for 26 years of dedicated service to the LBUSD and your lasting contributions to the lives of thousands of students.
To acknowledge those who are here to support you, that type of thing. So we'll start in the order that we did the presentations.
Thank you. I want to thank the Superintendents and the Board of Education for this recognition. I've been a proud employee of Long Beach Unified for the past 36 years and have had the wonderful career and appreciate the one that I had. I'm a huge advocate for our district and plan to volunteer even after I retire. Today, I wanted to share with you a little bit about the leaders who guided and supported me throughout my career. I started out in 1988 at Kettering and Garfield for student teaching. All student teachers at Kettering participated in professional development sessions focused on lesson design and management, which set me up for a positive career in education and success as a teacher. When I moved on to my second assignment at Garfield, Joanne Richardson was my lead teacher. I was grateful to know her and for her guidance during my career as both a teacher and an assistant principal. I only wanted to work in Long Beach Unified. I was grateful to find a home at John Sutter Elementary. I started in second grade, a month after Kimberly San Jose started in third grade. I've appreciated her friendship and leadership over my past 36 years. My first mentor was my principal, Nancy Henry. I still hear her in my head whenever my teachers ask me a question that they might look to find the answer for. It's in my head. She was a great support to me, and as a brand-new teacher, I was also lucky enough to work with two fantastic gurus in language arts, Teresa Suzuki and Pat Potter. They were at my school when I started. While I had a good foundation from college, they were the ones that helped me deal with the diverse reading abilities of my kids. I am grateful for the guidance and friendship of all these women to this day, and I tell Teresa all the time how important she was in laying the foundation for my career. Dr. Gwen Matthews was instrumental in my growth outside of the classroom, encouraging me to become a math specialist at Sutter and eventually moving to Hudson as a magnet coordinator. Dorothy Harper also provided me with growth opportunities such as teacher facilitator at Lafayette Elementary School. That was when I worked with the fabulous superintendent over there, David Zaid, and I was his ELA support and then facilitator in the afternoon. Lafayette was another school where I grew in my leadership from both Donna McKinn and Lucy Salazar. I am grateful to my Lafayette principal, Georgietta McNeil, because if not for her, I wouldn't be here. She recommended me to a program that the district was putting together called the Inspiring Administrators Program. And Lucy Salazar and I were two of the teachers recommended and chosen for this pilot program. It was a pilot when we started. This program laid the foundation for my administrative leadership. Both H.J. Green, high school superintendent, and Dorothy Harper, middle school superintendent, were instrumental in my placement at Hamilton, where I started 22 years ago as an AP. My growth as a leader also occurred under Connie Jensen as my principal at Hamilton. She encouraged me to step out and be summer school principal, which was another growth opportunity. Dr. Matthews then offered me a promotion to principal after that summer. And you know what? I was very grateful she trusted in my leadership, yet I knew being a principal wasn't in my path. Our district is very good at advocating for self-care. It took a lot for me to say no because I'm very much a yes person. I realized that I needed a better balance between my family and my work. Please know that I was continually encouraged by Kathleen Ambroni, Jerry Gloria, Wendy Claflin, Lisa Worsham, and the best boss ever, Sophia Griffith. I told them that I was happy being there, number two. And that was additionally, I hope I've positively impacted those who have moved into leadership positions under...
So I really do appreciate all that they did for me over those two decades. They finally let me graduate. And I moved on to OCIPD. So I want to give a shout-out to Chris Dominguez. She's the one that took a chance on me to be the PE curriculum leader for the district along with middle school and high school sports coordinator. And I got to work with some awesome people in the Office of Curriculum Instruction and Professional Development. You want to talk about some great educators. They live in OCIPD. They do phenomenal work. And that was such a great blessing for me to be able to work with those people. My work as a physical education teacher was greatly impacted by awesome colleagues, especially Sharon Moore Pulsifer, Stephanie Sasaki, Ruth Moore, Pam Penn, Adrian Behr, Brooks Merenden, Paige Vider, Brian Feeley, and the late, great Joan Van Blom. I'd like to recognize Dr. Camerino, with whom I worked in various capacities since 2011. Even though he's been my boss that whole entire time, I show him no mercy on the basketball or pickleball court. You're going down. I'd like to give another heartfelt thank you to Dr. Tiffany Brown for recognizing the need for a district-level administrator to organize, coordinate, and facilitate our middle school and high school athletic programs. I've been given the latitude to grow into this current position I hold and to create policy and procedures to help our schools provide great experiences for our student athletes. I did not complete everything that I set out to accomplish in my short time in the admin building, but hopefully I've put some foundational pieces in place so our student athletes and our athletic coaches and administrators can thrive. And don't worry, I'm leaving my successor a nice list of things to accomplish. I'd like to also publicly thank athletic directors that I've worked with over the last 14 years, including Jeff Evans from Wilson, Rob Schock at Poly, Mike Wadley at Lakewood, Casey Mendoza and Lorene Morgan at Milliken, and Lamar Biffle at Jordan. I knew at a very young age I was destined to be an educator. I originally thought I was going to be a college basketball coach. But I shortly realized after I graduated from college that my passion was to make a positive impact in the lives of high school kids through physical education and sport. What a journey I have been on, and I am not done yet. I learned quickly that effective communicating skills, communication skills, and building positive relationships with students, staff, admin, and parents is the foundation to any educational program. Like any good educator, I always reflected on my work. Did I get my learning target across? Did I reach that kid? Could I have said something differently to get a better response from a teacher, from an administrator, from a student? And there's always times, I know all of my educator friends here, it's like, am I really making a difference? Do I, well, what I'm doing really matter? Those are always questions because we don't get a lot of feedback. And so we're kind of like on an island sometimes. But a couple of months ago, I received a card from a 10th grader at Poly High School. I'd like to read it real quick. Dear Miss Lisa Ulmer, thank you so much for your involvement in Long Beach Unified School District youth sports programs. I have so many fond memories of competing here in Long Beach, and nearly all of them include you. You're so incredibly involved and always seems to be everywhere. Your love for sport and commitment to providing opportunities for Long Beach students to play sports is inspiring. Thank you. So education, educators, we know it's hard work, it's gut-wrenching, it's fulfilling, it's wonderful, it's torture, and there was nothing else I would rather do in my life. I can honestly say, and I truly mean this, I've never worked a day in my life. Every day as an educator has been exactly why I've been here on this planet, is to help kids and make relationships with other people. It has been an honor, a blessing, and a privilege to work for Long Beach Unified. Thank you.
All right. First of all, I want to thank my family for supporting me tonight, my son Joey and my husband Joe. I couldn't do this without them. And my two friends, Amy and Cindy, for being here tonight. Good evening, Long Beach School Board, Superintendent, Directors, Supervisors, Colleagues, Families, and Students. I arrived here in 1988 as a young teacher from Indiana, looking for a teaching position in Long Beach. I was grateful that I was hired right away as a long-term sub at Webster, which turned into a full-time position at Sutter. Sutter. Sutter is where I've met so many of you. I'm sitting here and, or standing here, looking around, and I'm like, Sutter, Sutter, Sutter. Jill was a facilitator at Sutter. James was a facilitator at Sutter. Kelly was a teacher there. Karen and I taught together. Maria and I taught together. It was, and Mr. Moskowitz also, he was an AP there. It's just amazing how it was a starting point for so many of us or just part of our path in wonderful years. As I approached the end of my teaching career in this district, I wanted to take a moment to express my heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of you. It's been an incredible journey filled with growth, learning, and so many cherished memories. To the school board, thank you for your unwavering commitment and dedication to our students. To our superintendent, Jill, thank you for your visionary leadership and guidance throughout the school year. Your passion for education and your tireless efforts, especially during the pandemic, have inspired me and countless others. I will remember our time at Sutter. To our elementary directors and supervisors, thank you for your expertise, your mentorship, and your continuous encouragement. My years as a principal would not have been successful without you answering my many texts and phone calls for support and direction and encouragement to continue on. And to my colleagues, thank you for being my second family. Your collaboration, your camaraderie, your shared commitment to our students have made almost every day in the classroom a wonderful experience. You will forever hold a special place in my heart. And to the Long Beach families, especially my Cleveland families, thank you for entrusting me with the education of your children. It's been an honor to work alongside you in shaping the lives of our students. And finally, to my students. Thank you for inspiring me every single day. You are the passion behind my teaching and my leading. It has been a privilege to be a part of your educational journey, and I am grateful for the opportunity to have made a positive impact on your life. As I ready myself for the next chapter, I will cherish these memories, these friendships, and lessons learned during my time in Long Beach Unified. I am grateful for you, and I love your support. Thank you very much.
I believe Maria Jose is next.
So know that this afternoon, I practiced talking to my kids, my second, look, I'm already, my second graders. I said, hey, I have a big date. You're my last class. I couldn't get through it. I had about seven of them crying. It's been a long journey. I haven't written what I wrote today on my way over here, but it's in my heart. First of all, the man upstairs, my dad next to him. Yea, mi mami, que esta aqui. Gracias por todo. Gracias por estar aqui. Muy gratitud por todo. Gracias. As I thank my mom, I look at what I try to teach my students. I try to teach them, si se puede, you can do this. It was not an easy upbringing, but we had loving parents. And I think when I look at myself, my siblings that are here, my daughter, I have another daughter who couldn't make it. She was really trying to, but she's taking a test at Cal State Long Beach. And so that's another testament to the work that, as a family, we've done. And my brother, Thomas, who's a principal in the district, being an inspiration. When I first came here, I came from radio and TV, right out of Spanish Telemundo. I did some reporting and I did some advertising. I also drove the Cadillac for KODJ. I was a young 19. I don't know how old some people are, but Charlie Toon and I worked with them and all these old folks. But there was, I had married my high school sweetheart, Sam. Why are you pointing to my brother? My honey there that I met in junior high. And he's, along the way, he's always been with me. And we decided, we got married, decided to make a family. Advertising was wonderful, but very challenging. Weekends, it was crazy life. Money was great, but I wanted children. I wanted that family. So we made the big change, left everything, you know, high up there. And it's in God's hands because it didn't happen for eight years to have my kids. Tanya. Emma. But I want to share this story because oddly enough, how it happened was that we were ready to adopt, and there's a reason why I'm saying this story. So finally, the district, thank you, district, Apple Award, and the district in Long Beach gave me a scholarship. So total, I pretty much decided to go and pay for my masters. I went to get my masters. And after two pregnancy losses, voila, I got pregnant. So Emma was born in 2004 when I started my program, and Tanya was born in 2006 when I finished. So to that, I'm very grateful that I was able to accomplish that in my life. It was not easy, and that's what I tell my students. It's not an easy journey, but it can be accomplished. As I look at my mom, and I think four children that were raised in Honeydew Park, difficult life, but a lot of love, a lot of support, and we made it. And that's exactly what I wanted to do throughout these years, teach my children, my students. I refer to them as my school angels because it is possible. And sometimes, you know, during COVID times, and we keep talking about COVID times, and we think it's quite rough, you know, these times, everything that we all live, we kind of look back and we think, do we really live that? And it's still here. It's still lingering, you know, that challenge. And so it's an everyday battle. Sometimes I get home and I'm all pooped in my blue couch, and I'll be talking about little Johnny here, and like, oh, it was a rough day with him and what have you. But then at night, I wake up with little Johnny in my head, thinking, what am I going to do to make that difference with these little people? And I have 30 students. It's always a challenge when you have that many kiddos. However, it's so wonderful to be able to see them just glow and every day see that change, even though it's a few steps maybe, but they're getting there. They're getting there. Thank you, Long Beach, for your support. In so many ways, I feel very blessed. I wouldn't have stayed, and by the way, I was there 25 years, 26 years at Webster, never moved. They forced me out of my room one time. And I had been in the same room for a long time, and then they put some weird numbers in my room here. But you know what? I have great coworkers, as I see Nurse Paula right there, and just awesome people that are not just there every day to do the job that the title says, but they pour in every ounce of love that they have. They go beyond. My vision is, if I could provide for my children, Emma and Tanya, and give them what I know I could give them, I was able to achieve, I want that for my students. They can do it. Now, that's the West Side, right? But we want that for all the kids. Another thing that I wanted to share was, throughout the 25 years, 26 years, I lost, we lost three of students in my career for illness, and the other one was just horrendous. But they will always remain in my heart, always in my heart. And whatever the challenge is, I think as long as everybody supports each other and we're able to talk, communicate, you know, I always, when Mr. Zaid comes by, I remember him as that younger guy that used to come, and, you know, to see you grow so much in the district, that's so awesome. Jay, you know, been a friend of my brother's, and just amazing. I feel like it's a family. Anyway, I could go on and on, but I wanted to say thank you. I wanted to say thank you so much for the opportunity to have served as a teacher, as a mother, to these kids. Because you don't have to have kids to be a mother or a dad. And I owe it all to, it's a village, to everyone that has the same interests as I have. So my next steps for retirement, my family and I have done some recent traveling. We've been to Europe, you know, Italy. We've been doing a lot of stuff like that, kind of saving our money. I also want to go to Disney and maybe be Minnie Mouse. So don't freak out if I'm talking to you. I meet the requirement. And also be subbing a couple of times, you know, maybe. I don't want to stay too far. And probably at Webster, you know? I don't want to find out where the new bathroom is or anything like that. I'm good. They know me, I know them. But again, thank you. Thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you to my family, my sisters, and everyone that has contributed to the success that I feel I have had. You know, it doesn't always seem perfect, but it's there. So this shirt, my honey, I've been in when I was 12, that we were in junior high, and Star Wars was really strong. And of course, he gives me this, says, the force is strong with this teacher. So that's what he gave to me, and I just wanted to share it with you because, yes, you need a lot of strength to sometimes work with these kiddos, but you can't live without them either. Yes, amen to that. Thank you.
Okay, so we will now do pictures, so that's going to take us a couple of minutes. So we'll have a little bit of a break, and we'll do pictures with our retirees.
So my next steps for retirement, my family and I have done some recent traveling. We've been to Europe, you know, Italy, we've been doing a lot of stuff like that, kind of saving our money. I also want to go to Disney and maybe be Minnie Mouse. So don't freak out if I'm talking to you. I meet the requirement. And also be subbing a couple of times, you know, maybe, I don't want to stay too far. And probably at Webster, you know? I don't want to find out where the new bathroom is or anything like that. I'm good, they know me, I know them. But again, thank you, thank you very much from the bottom of my heart. Thank you to my family, my sisters, and everyone that has contributed to the success that I feel I have had, you know? It doesn't always seem perfect, but it's there. So this shirt, my honey, I've been out when I was 12, that we were in junior high, and Star Wars was really strong. And of course, he gives me this, says, the force is strong with this teacher. So that's what he gave to me, and I just wanted to share it with you, because yes, you need a lot of strength to sometimes work with these kiddos, but you can't live without them either. Yes, amen to that. Thank you.
Okay, so we will now do pictures, so that's going to take us a couple of minutes. So we'll have a little bit of a break, and we'll do pictures with our retirees. It's so wonderful to celebrate with everybody, but it's so wonderful to celebrate with everybody, but we do have a meeting. You're welcome to go and celebrate with your groups, but we need to get back to the business of the meeting. If I could get back to our agenda, thank you so much, everybody. Before we go any further, we do have a visual presentation, so I'll direct your attention to our screens, where we have something special to watch. Thank you.
Real Productions is kind of like working within the film industry, editing, filming, all the photography stuff as well, and working with your other students.
My goal is to hopefully prepare them for that type of media job, you know? Mobile journalism, or if they want to go into actual filmmaking, or if they even want to do marketing. This is a skill that they need to have to be able to be hireable in those fields.
We're learning how to adapt to different situations, like whenever we have some other project come up that isn't like routine. I think it's really useful, because it gives us some experience that is outside of class.
I get a lot of experience, and I get to talk with my other teammates, so I know what it's like to work in a field. And usually, you're working with a lot of people, so you get to learn how to plan and cooperate with big teams.
I want to give them the skill set to be able to go out and compete in the market right away out of high school. That's why it is important for me to have students do work-based learning, because they learn it in the classroom, but they also get to apply it. You can learn all the skills, but if you don't know how to put it all together in the field, it's going to be very hard for someone to be able to go, oh, that person's legit, they know what they're doing.
When we go into a nice line of work, we're extra prepared.
Yeah, it's always wonderful to see what's happening throughout the district, and all the wonderful programs, and how the students are involved. So now is the time for public testimony, and we do have one speaker for items listed on the agenda. And so Christine Gibson, you have three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Christine Gibson. I'm proud to say that I am a credentialed school nurse with Long Beach Unified. I've been the school nurse at Franklin for the past nine years, and Go Wildcats. And I want to just acknowledge my colleague, where are you? Sorry. Paula Camacho, she is also a school nurse at Webster, and also a Wildcats, so Go Wildcats again. My reason for being here is to speak to the LCAP funding topic, which I believe is 15.1. I also want to acknowledge School Nurse Day is coming up, but hopefully we'll be back on the microphone later to talk about that on a non-agenda. But I want to just acknowledge that when we provide health and medical services for over 64,000 kids, you can imagine it takes a team effort. Everybody needs to show up with their yay game, right? We have approximately 44 credentialed school nurses on our campuses, and over 80-plus campuses on any given day, that means that about half of our campuses do not have direct access to a credentialed school nurse. Now, the district, thankfully, over the last two and a half years, has provided additional support through agency nurses. We've had about 20-plus nurses that have come in, registered nurses, to help us with the day-to-day. And the day-to-day can be very busy, as if you've ever spent any time in a health office, it's non-stop. The reason I bring this up is because it's my understanding that due to pandemic funding ending, those 20 additional agency nurses will be sunsetted, and we will not have that additional support. So that's roughly a third of our nurses that we have in our class, in our campuses right now, that will not be there next year. So we're really urging you to look at how LCAP funding can help fill that gap. Our students definitely deserve access to school nurses who can provide the care when they need it, and to not have to wait for services. I also wanted to just speak to the fact that school nurses were really on the front lines of a healthy future. In fact, that's what my sweatshirt says, is Long Beach School Nurses on the Front Lines of a Healthy Future. So as you're thinking about Vision 2035, the things that we do today are helping to build those students of tomorrow, and we're helping those students not only manage their own health conditions, but how to advocate for themselves, how to listen to their bodies, how to talk to healthcare providers. All of those skills are things that we're helping to support in the health office. So not only help meeting those needs, but also helping them to function and take care of themselves in the future. So any support you can provide for school nurses, we greatly appreciate it, and thank you so much.
Thank you. I see that we have quite a stack of forums for people who wish to speak on items not on the agenda. So even though you have three minutes, if you finish up earlier, that means more people have an opportunity to speak. And then I just want to remind everybody that we won't be discussing anything, because unless it's on the agenda, we don't discuss it. And again, you have three minutes. We're going to start with Shyla Darden, and then DeeDee will be after Shyla.
Hello, I would like to say that my name is Shia, not Shyla. Like I said, my name is Shia Darden. I'm a senior at Lakewood High School, and I hold multiple leadership positions within CFJ. I want to start this off by saying that there is a difference between education and indoctrination. CFJ is not a place of brainwashing, but a place of brain expansion. I have learned a multitude of things because of this organization, and I have not only gained important research skills, but I have also learned how to properly process information. I was recently blessed with the opportunity to accompany Dr. Pamela Levitt, some educators, and some students from Black Literary Studies groups across the district to the East Coast. This study trip, the objective of this study trip was to learn from Dr. Jarvis Givens at Harvard, who's a Black man, by the way, and learn about the trailblazers of, the Black trailblazers in American history pertaining to education. On that trip, I have learned a plethora of things, but the thing that stuck out most to me was positive Black history. With, sorry, with that, it brought me to a state of confusion. I was confused because I find it surprising that I had to travel across the country to find out about people like Belinda Sutton, who was a Black woman who sued her former slave owners for reparations and won. Or how Elizabeth Freeman, who was also a Black woman, launched the Freedom Suit, which eventually led to the outlawing of slavery in Massachusetts in 1783. I am confused because, I am confused as to why this isn't being taught in our standard curriculum, and I'm also confused as to why there aren't spaces where I can find similar information, and if they are, they are not being showcased properly. I understand that the Center of Black Excellence for Students, I mean, the Center of Black Students Excellence is coming into conception, and I also understand that you guys are in a time of allocating the funds for the district. So with that, I ask two things. One, I ask that the center be fully funded, and that Black students are at the designing, are included in the designing of the center. I understand that you guys probably be surveying, taking a lot of information from us, but I'm asking that we have a seat at the table to ensure that we are truly heard and truly get our needs met as Black students. My second ask is that the district not only keep its contract alive with CFJ, but also make sure that design teams within the district stay at our schools and expand to every site. The work that we do in the design teams are imperative, because without students being a part of the process of change, who's to say a change will be made at all? Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for mispronouncing your name, Shia, that's my bad eyesight. And so DeeDee, after DeeDee, we'll have Matla? Matea? Oh, boy. I'll need some help.
Good evening, board members. My name is DeeDee Okafor. I'm a senior at Wilson High School. I'm part of the design team, as well as the statewide student advisory board. I'm also our former governor of DEI and our current senior class secretary. And today, I'll be talking about my experience in CFJ. CFJ really helped me develop myself as a leader, especially in a community and a society that tells us people who look like me that were not called to be leaders, were not meant to be leaders. They really helped me blossom that individuality within me. This first manifestation that I had was being able to hold professional developments at my school. This was my opportunity to teach teachers how to build those relationships with students and to bridge that gap between the adult and the child. And it was really influential and really amazing to see how much these educators were eager and hungry to learn from what we know, the knowledge that we have. This is the first time in our district that students had the opportunity to host professional develops, and you know, you have to do historic work to make historic change that will last for generations to come. And it's just really amazing to see that the fact that students are able to partner with these leaders and really make historic change. On our campus, we're able to see Black students willing to get involved in these leadership roles and go out and feel like they belong on campus, and that's really a testament to the work that we do in CFJ. I've also had the opportunity to fly to San Francisco, where I talked in front of 1,000 educators who were hungry to know what I had, to learn about my experience, so that they can shape pedagogy, and be able to develop themselves for their students and be better for their students as these students are changing. It's really important that as students are changing in this generation, that teachers understand how to work and develop with them. I had the opportunity to host two workshops. My first workshop was on the importance of culture and education, while my other one was about the importance of partnerships with students. And I had an educator who came up to me, and she had problems really building relations with Black students in her campus, and so I kind of was able to provide her with frameworks and tools to really bridge that gap and be able to connect with her students. CFJ also helped me in a number of aspects in my life. Currently, as a senior, I've had the opportunity to be accepted into a number of schools, including USC, Duke University, Berkeley, UCLA, and just to name a few. But this, they've invited me to join their global leadership programs, and this is my opportunity to really immerse myself in the global leadership world. And this is really a testament to what CFJ does, to build that leader within us, to really spark that opportunity for us to take off in the world, to not only change our district, but to change the world. And that's really important, and I feel like CFJ is the only, the only organization in this district that does that. So I would like to say that you guys should really stand with CFJ, and I urge you guys to really implement these things, and I think the design team is a key aspect in our district that has historically been the things, doing the things that we need to be done. And there's this quote that says, "The task is not to put greatness into people, but is to solicit it, for the greatness is already there." And CFJ sees that greatness in each and every one of us, and I hope you guys see that greatness in CFJ. Thank you.
So Mateo? Oh, Mateo, and then after Mateo, Jaclyn.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Mateo Munoz. I am a sophomore at Lakewood High School, and I am a student leader with Californians for Justice. I have been on the design team since my freshman year of high school. It is important to have data. Data tells us exactly how to do many things based on past and present information. I have, I understand that LBUSD is entering a budgeting phase, a phase in which the next three years, a phase in which ultimately determines the next three years, a phase in which you must gather all information to make an informed decision. I want to share with you the data I have collected. As a design team member, I'm able to connect with my admin and make policy changes and transformations to my school. Last year, I was able to put on my school's first annual cultural fair, and through a recent survey, we found that 90% of kids felt recognized. Because of CFJ, kids at my school felt that they belonged. Because of CFJ, I was able to make a change, small but meaningful change, in order to try to make my school a better place. I can say that I'm excited for upcoming May for our second go-around. Not only has CFJ helped, I'm so sorry, not only has this fair helped other kids, but it also taught me how to budget, organize, and plan and organize a school-wide event. Because of CFJ, because of CFJ, I was also able to, last August, I was also able to go to Sacramento and lobby legislators and state officials to advocate for more mental health resources and to keep police out of our schools to make the kids feel safer. Not many 15-year-olds can even think of doing that. CFJ has given me opportunities I would never have imagined. I have showed you the data and can only say that we need a design team to keep a connection between students and administrators, and with a focus on Black student, on Black voice and excellence. CFJ has given Lakewood and other schools a model of community, and I ask the board to continue this model. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mateo. And after Jaclyn, we have Anyeli.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jaclyn Oliver Cruz, and I am here. I am a Lakewood, I'm a senior at Lakewood High School, and I am currently a core leader at CFJ. And I was, I joined CFJ this year, and it is truly amazing how much it impacted me so, in such a little amount of time. To start off, one of my first times speaking in front of a large crowd was at CSU OB. It was as, it was to share my experience as a student, as a first-generation student in my family, and it was truly empowering. Apart from opportunities such as speaking in front of large crowds of future educators, CFJ has provided me with a safe space to share my experiences as a student. And I can also, sorry, and and, sorry, and where other students like me can share their experiences as well. It has opened my eyes to see all these other people's, sorry, it has opened my eyes to see other people's perspectives in school who are like me as well. It has shown me the negatives and the positives in our communities. So Apar, sorry. My understanding of all the changes needed in school has grown because of this space and what my friends and fellow peers share about their negatives and positive experiences at school. As a community, we need a change by enhancing mental health and safety measures. For example, the Wellness Center at Lakewood High School has improved my attitude at school because I have been able to talk to Ms. Evelyn and have had my feelings validated, validated without feeling judged. By this, I mean that the district should follow a path where there are investments in mental health for Black students. This change is important because there has been a lack of support for Black students in the past and currently. This would work towards the reparations that Black students deserve and need. And as a Latina, reparations for Black students means reparations for everyone. So the district should ensure current and future accessibility of these resources and that Black students have the decision-making power over what that looks like. Thank you.
Thank you. After, after Anyeli, we have Dylan.
Hello, and once again, it's pronounced Angelie. Good evening, faculty members, school board members, and everybody else here with me today. My name's Angelie Aldana, and I'm currently a senior at Cabrillo High School. And again, I am Cabrillo's chapter president. Ever since I can remember, ever since we've been younger, we've been told we can't think for ourselves. Younger students or kids have this adult-to-kids stigma where it's like, "I'm the adult, you should listen to what I say because you're too young to think for yourself." And yes, of course, this is true. We, as younger individuals, don't completely have the means or the thoughts that we want to say when we're younger. But as we grow older, we start to develop our own sense of self, our own identity. And because of that, growing up, it's more than just thoughts, it's actions, it's feelings, it's learning what you want to say and learning what to stand for because you're your own person. You have free will, and nobody can take that from you. So to say that high school students are being indoctrinated, being brainwashed, is honestly not giving enough, is not giving teens enough credit. Are they saying that we are not smart to think for ourselves? Are they saying that we're not just quote-unquote "good enough" to stand with you guys as adults? I don't think so. I think that before I even come and speak to a big platform and of, of importing people, I do my own research. I'm able to know what I want to talk about because I, for myself, and I have always been a very opinion, an opinionated person, and I know what I want to say. So to say that, I feel like is coming off very disrespectful. Not only that, but CFJ has multiple individuals here. My, I would like to call them my family because that's what they are to me. We all are outstanding, and we all have achieved so much with CFJ. But not only that, CFJ has not only given us our voice to be outspoken, they have learned and taught us how to go into a space and not be scared. They've taught us how to come and see each other as individuals and as equals. So being a part of the design team as well, and learning how to get up there and talk about an experience of how teachers are usually teaching classrooms, but now students are being able to teach teachers, and seeing that, and seeing how much that has honestly changed for myself, has been truly amazing to see that. So I'm asking the district to continue their partnership with the design team because not only is it supporting your Vision 2035 for school reparations, but it's also supporting kids who have felt that they don't have the voice for themselves. Thank you.
Thank you, Anyeli. And after, after Dylan, we have Omar.
How y'all doing today? My name is Dylan Gladney. I'm a senior at Lakewood High School. And today I want to talk to you about me supporting Californians for Justice. I show my solidarity and support to them simply because they've shaped me as a student, as a leader, as a Black man in America just alone. They have shown me how to conduct myself, how to just go through life, honestly. And I, actually, I want to talk about the first time I was at a CFJ meeting alone. So at the first meeting, they taught me this chant. It's called Isang Bak Sak. It was a chant used by Filipino and Mexican farmworkers. They, and it means, hold on, let me see, it means one, one down? Yeah, one down. So one, one down, one goes down, we all go down. And if we, one, well, one rises, we all rise. That alone, to me, embodies what CFJ is because that solidarity is what they follow. They don't see color. I don't see color. When they say, "We all rise," we all rise. They, their goal is for all students in LBUSD and pretty much the world to be together as one. And for people to say that they're a hate group is just, it's, it's distasteful and it's, and it's not right. CFJ has always had the, the goal of making LBUSD a better place for me as a Black man, as a Black student. They have been trying to make that a better place for me. And I just, I say all this to say, I, I side with CFJ, and I want them to be, I want you to keep this partnership going with them. Because without them, I would not be in the space that I'm in. I would not be talking to teacher, future teachers at CSU OB. I would not be in this space right now, talking to you all. I would not be the, the man I am today. I would not be going to college with all the knowledge that I have. And so I also ask that you keep, keep, fully fund the Blacks, the Blacks Student Resource Center. I know personally, and I've spent time with Dr. Pamela Levitt, she is a great woman and she's a passionate woman. And she, and I truly believe that if you fully fund that, that, and you give us students a say in what happens with it, it will turn into a real resource for us, not just something that we want, but something that we need. That's something that we need as Black students in America. Thank you.
Thank you. After Omar, we have Dreza.
Good evening, Superintendent Baker, Deputy Superintendent Brown, members of the board. My name's Omar Cardenas. I am a, I'm the Senior Director of Organizing Base Bill and Leadership Development at Californians for Justice. I'm also a father to a future LBUSD student. I'm very proud of that. And a resident of District Two. I just got to say, take a deep breath, like, it's nerve-wracking to stand up here and speak to you all. The power dynamic is definitely felt, and so I just want to give props to all the students who have gone up here and showed bravery and courage to share their stories because, speaking from personal experience, I know how nerve-wracking it can be. With that being said, I'd be remiss to not talk a little bit about what today, what the significance of today is. Today, we remember and we celebrate May Day, right? Which a hundred and forty years ago, in nineteen eighteen eighty-four, workers throughout the world and in this country stood up to fight for an eight-hour workday and won. I think something that we all here can, can really appreciate and acknowledge that we benefit from. On May first, eighteen eighty-six, over three hundred thousand workers walked off their job to ensure that they secured those demands. This shift in history was made possible by workers who recognized their collective power and decided to organize for better working conditions. CFJ is proud to be a youth organizing organization that stands on the shoulders of those who sacrificed their lives to ensure future generations had a better quality of life. We draw on lessons and power from leaders like May Day. May Day founder Lucy Parsons, who was a Mexican-American, African-American, Native-American descent, who stood in solidarity with marginalized communities to end all, end the status quo, right? Very similar to thousands of students across this country who in this very moment are standing in solidarity with Palestinians who are fighting for their lives. The skills and knowledge that our members gain by participating in our programs ensure that young people can enter, can not only be the leaders that we need today in their schools, but leaders when they go off into, beyond high school, right? To create a different world, a more just world that they inherited. I've been an organizer in this district alongside young people for, for many years, for over a decade. And I remember a time when we didn't have an equity initiative, we didn't have a BSAI, we didn't have wellness centers, we didn't have a whole lot of the things that we have now. So I do, I think it's really important that we applaud this administration, this board, for championing these efforts. I think these are, these are noble, and we need to continue to invest in them, continue to prioritize the needs of Black students. And this should look like having young people part of the designing of the LCAP and all the other things that young people have mentioned here today. And so I think, just in closing, I want to encourage all of us as adults to really honor the voices of young people when they say that this is their truth, that we stand on that, that we hold it, and that we believe that this is their truth. And I think that's really important. And that's one of the best ways that we can honor their voices and their leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. After, after Dreza, we have Jesus.
Good evening. We are here tonight to represent Poly Academy of Achievers and Leaders and to voice our disagreement with the decision to close PAL. To begin with, the lack of transparency and collaboration surrounding PAL's imminent closure does not align with the core values embraced by Long Beach Unified's Vision 2035. Efforts to identify the entity responsible for making the decision, the reasoning behind it, and when or if the decision was or will be voted on by the board uncovered nothing substantial. Moving to the actual decision, we understand enrollment is down, but it should never be down at PAL. Scaled grading, early interventions, and Apex cannot compensate for mental health issues, nor will they break down the barriers posed by poverty and culture. Going ahead with this uninspired decision jeopardizes the core values of Vision 2035. I'm told the district is taking alternative ed in a different direction. This direction, however, is not equitable. The district demands high levels of student engagement from teachers, yet it plans to literally plow our school under and subject students to hours of mind-numbing Apex courses. This is not equity. It is sweeping social issues that beg to be addressed under a proverbial academic carpet, and it is miles from centering student needs and voice. If, as the Vision 2035 graduate portrait suggests, we aim for our students to be equity-minded, we must model equity and allow them to be part of an equitable system. At PAL, teachers and staff attend to the needs of the whole child. We see our students daily for two years. We know their struggles and work to overcome them. At PAL, students seize opportunities they have never had. They earn recognition for academic achievement and participate in student council and ASB. Some enroll in onsite vocational trainings, others register at LBCC. At PAL, we do more than help struggling students earn diplomas. We pull them from the margins, build their confidence, and send them into the world, future-ready and with purpose. The Vision 2035 system portrait focuses on creating conditions that will enable LBUSD students to thrive. Closing PAL and subsequently eliminating electives for all Poly students to make room for online courses will not create conditions where any student will thrive. The district must do better by kids who do not fit the mold. Not only should PAL remain open, but district resources, in the form of full-time counseling, more stand-up instruction, more electives, intramural sports teams, and more after-school vocational programs should be poured into PAL. Though the district aspires to be divergent and courageous, in this case, it is being predictable and punitive. We at PAL are determined to disrupt the system of oppression the district plans to place in the path of the most vulnerable. We ask the district to be transparent with the community so we have a fair chance to save PAL. Our ultimate goal is to convince you to reverse this decision because you understand that kids are the priority, and PAL is good for kids.
After Jesus, we have Osvaldo.
Good afternoon, members of the board. I'm Jesus Torres, and I'm representing Long Beach Poly PAL. Prior to attending PAL, I always had the biggest weight on my shoulders, holding my composure and responsibilities with my last grip. It wasn't until attending PAL where that weight became so much less. Originally, I went here as my last resort. I was promised another path by my counselor, but it simply didn't pan out. Formerly being from the PACE pathway, I can say that I've seen every type of classroom with the most gifted individuals and talented students to the kids who are seen as juveniles from afar. That most certainly isn't the case, though. The people who, who attend PAL are talented. Everyone's story is different, but we all ended up here out of the necessity to graduate as well as the necessity to overcome our struggles. In my case, when I finally built up the courage to ask for help, I would, I instead was sent on an island, which was PAL. Being sent here, I felt like a disappointment. I felt stranded. I felt despair. But little did I know, attending PAL was the greatest blessing I've received in my life. PAL has put me in a far greater place than I could ever imagine. It amazes me how, at one point in time, I felt so behind, but now I'm in position to get in front of my peers. This upcoming January, as a junior, I'm estimated to be an early grad. It would be heartbreaking to see something I'm so passionate about and how it's affected my life in such a positive manner to just rip away. I firmly believe that instead of taking this blessing from my life and other people in the future, I think more funding, more resources should be put into this program. Because it has allowed kids like myself, who had, who have been overlooked by the district, to have a second chance. Thank you.
Thank you. After Osvaldo, we have Leilani.
Good evening. My name is Osvaldo Albarran Brito. I teach at PAL, a social science teacher. In the beginning of every year, I ask my students to tell me how they feel about being at PAL, and most of them, right away, tell me, you know, "I'm ashamed, I'm embarrassed." Most of the time, I just get called, you know, "That's a school for dumb people." And, but I, you know, I've witnessed the kind of culture that we've built at PAL, not just among students, but among the staff as well. And it goes way beyond just getting them ready for college or ready for a job outside, outside of high school. And I have witnessed students find their voice, which is exactly what they're doing here, and find pride in the work that they do. And much more importantly, they just begin to believe in themselves after being in a system that, quite honestly, just failed them. And now we want to put them back in that very system, or put them in some kind of online, online courses where you're not going to get this type of student that comes up here and talks about their feelings and how, and how involved they want to be with, with this type of system. Now, it's kind of amazing to me that all the talk of equity and progress is only reserved for our personal development, for their professional development meetings and stops kind of short of action because, in my perspective, you nurture the soul of a student and the education will follow. And that's exactly what's been happening at a PAL, and I think the students that are here today are a good testament to what we've, to the work that we've been doing inside of PAL. And outside of this very building, it says, "America's Best Urban Schools," and I guarantee you that PAL was one of them. And now it's gone. So now I don't, you know, as, as an educator, listening to all of these, you know, professional development meetings and ideas about bridging the gap of students of color, well, this is exactly what it looks like to bridge the gap of students of color. And shutting down PAL seems like a very direct and blatant opposition to that very goal, which us as educators, we get kind of fed every single professional development meeting, that we are supposed to be looking out for the needs of these students, and closing down PAL kind of seems like a very, very direct opposition to that. So, in my perspective, I think these students show very well what we have done at PAL. And now that it's gone, I really wanted to, we really wanted to show you what we could do if PAL were to continue. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Leilani, and then we have time for one more, and that would be Bruce.
Good afternoon, board meeting. I'm here speaking for Eber de Agua, and then I'm going to be speaking for myself about after. For Eber, when I first came to PAL, I was scared. I didn't know what to expect and how they would treat me and such. But the teachers made me feel more secure in the environment. With this said, I understand the desire to improve sports facilities for our students, but I'm concerned about the potential impact of shutting down PAL to build the softball field. As a member of this community and school, I believe we should explore solutions that balance the academic and athletic needs of our students in a way that maintains the core educational mission of the school that promotes equality for all students. I'm hoping most of you will see the impact PAL leaves on most of these students, and I'm hoping- see the impact PAL leaves on most of these students, and I'm hopeful you reconsider your decision by gathering input from teachers, parents, and students so that we can develop an alternative proposal that addresses the community's concerns. Perhaps there are funding sources or creative facility designs that can meet our needs without disrupting the school's operation. My goal is not to simply oppose the current plan, but to work together to find the best path forward for our students and our community as a whole. And then, for myself, I barely started attending PAL at the beginning of February. PAL has given me a fresh start in the, with a new environment where I truly believe I have thrived. For me, high school has never been easy. PAL has given me a sense of belonging, helping me make connections with my peers, and has given me the support I needed to succeed in the future. And PAL is just beyond academics as well. We encourage sports tournaments and fun activities to help students and teachers engage with each other while having fun. Closing PAL will not just mean shutting down a school, but taking away a place of growth, support, and opportunity for future students. PAL is a place where students are given a second chance to succeed. I hope you reconsider the profound impact PAL has had on all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have time for one more, and that'll be Bruce.
Hello, everyone. I am a student at Long Beach Poly PAL, and I'll be speaking on behalf of another student. The best way I can describe Long Beach Poly PAL is a school that is judgment-free, inclusive, student-based school that is not only important for credit recovery, but a school with a sense of belonging and a fresh start. The teacher and staff of this school unite to help all students, no matter what race, sexual orientation, or religion you are. We at, we at PAL believe it necessary for this school to remain operational, to help those currently at PAL and those who will attend PAL in the future. Consider our needs and circumstances as people, not numbers. View us as people, not just data. Think of the future kids who are failing and will never have the opportunity to recover and have the fresh start we were given here at PAL as students and individuals. So please reconsider from closing just, not just Long Beach Poly PAL, but a place of opportunity, hope, and unity. Don't give up on those who are being given up on. I'm speaking behalf of another student. My name is Stephanie Pacheco, currently PAL student. My reason for being at PAL is due to attendance and lack of credits. I wasn't doing so well myself. I'd say I was at my lowest. I have been through a lot, and to end up at PAL, I thought it couldn't get any worse. PAL not only has helped me recover my credits, but has helped me be more outgoing and socialize more, simply expressing myself. I'd go as far as to even call this a blessing or a second shot at school. This is my story out of about 150 students. We all have our stories and on how and why we ended up at PAL. Sorry. The most important thing is to graduate. PAL has stepped up to help students meet the graduation requirements while not making students feel miserable, but more so excited about attending school. PAL is a safe place for many. We are capable of having fun while still learning, passing classes, despite your vision to close down our school for other purposes. Current PAL students and staff members came to, to show support to hopefully get you to reconsider your decision. Although we are juniors and seniors, we wouldn't be selfish. We wouldn't, we want PAL to remain up and running for the future generation, for gen, for the future generations and their education. Moving on to your core values, you state, "We believe that every student has the ability to thrive and that's, and has the ability to thrive and that success requires that we attend the needs of the whole child." Is hearing students complaining and disagreeing, disagreeing them setting us up for success, and are you just going to let us believe that we don't have a voice? In conclusion, you state, "We believe that by working together, we can address challenges and take actions needed to have a positive impact on student outcomes." I am asking you to please hear us out, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. That's all the time we have for public comment. And now we move on the agenda to reports on superintendent advisory groups. We will start with the Business Budget and Policy Development Advisory Group, Dr. Benitez.
Thank you, President Craighead. So, no policy updates to report on, but I do have information to share regarding our two major bond projects at Washington and Poly. So, our team is hosting two community meetings regarding these projects. First meeting will be May 8th at 6:00 PM at Washington, and interpretation and translation will be provided at these meetings. And then the meeting at Poly will be May 21st at 6:30 PM at the auditorium. I'm sorry, I, I don't know if I mentioned that for Washington. So, this is an opportunity for community members to learn about the projects, ask questions, express thoughts about them. Am I missing anything, Mr. Miranda? Okay. There, there's also a, an opportunity to learn about both the interim housing that will be provided at Butler, but also some additional information will be shared about maximizing the space at Butler and then having some community space also there provided. So, more information will be provided May 8th, 6:00 PM at Washington, May 21st, 6:30 PM at Poly. If you have any questions on the specifics of those things, I'm sure our team can respond prior to that. What would be the best place, Dr. Baker, for folks prior to the May 8th meeting to find out details about?
The bond website that is linkable from our district website. You can click on B for bonds, and it'll take you to the bond website.
Thank you. That's it for me, President Craighead.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. And these are big issues because these are schools that are going to be completely redone, so I'm sure people have a lot of questions, and there will be a lot of information available. Let's see, we have the Instruction and Student Learning Support Advisory Group. Do you have a report? No report. How about Mr. Miller with Workforce Development?
No report this week.
No report. Mr. Otto, Student Outcome Focused Governance Report?
Yeah, very briefly, our next Student Outcome Focused Governance Advisory Group will meet next week. District staff is working with teachers and students at select sites to bring their voices and stories to our May 15th board meeting, meeting in alignment with Board Goals One, which has to do with reading proficiency, and Goal Four, which has to do with college and career readiness. Over the past two months, we've been engaged in discussions about quantitative data aligned to our four goal, board goals. Now, the May 15th session is to allow us to bring qualitative data into that conversation as we make connections between the initiatives taking place in our schools and the impact on student outcomes aligned to our goals. So, it's a work in progress. We're looking forward to the information that we're developing now, and we'll bring it to our next meeting on May 15th. Fair Mr. Benitez.
Thank you. Covered everything, Mr. Otto.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we're going to have a five-minute break, and we will reconvene at 6:45. Are my eyes right? Okay. Thank you, everyone. Five-minute break. the agenda to get to. So, welcome back, everybody. We're going to get down to business. So, we are at the Consent Calendar. You need a motion?
Move approval.
Okay. Before we take a vote on the Consent Calendar, I will have our student board member read a resolution for us. Axel.
I would like to read out Resolution 050124-B. Resolution of the Board of Education of Long Beach Unified School District Supporting Teacher Appreciation Week. Whereas, an informed, educated citizenry is the foundation for the success of our democracy, our economy, and America's future, and whereas, thousands of dedicated teachers in Long Beach Unified School District inspire, motivate, and mold the minds of our future workforce and leaders, and whereas, no other profession touches the lives of so many individuals with such a profound and lasting effect, and whereas, the effects of excellent teaching last a lifetime, grow in value through the years, and pay dividends far beyond the classroom in terms of equality of life, and whereas, the Long Beach Unified School District continues to be recognized as the leading school system, thanks in large part to our dedicated teachers, and whereas, our teachers deserve special recognition for preserving in their noble pursuit of education excellence and equity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Long Beach Unified School District hereby proclaims May 6 to 10 as Teacher Appreciation Week and urges everyone to observe this week by taking time to remember, thank and honor those who devote their lives to giving the lasting gift of a great education. It witness whereof, we are here on to set our hands this first day of May 2024. The Board of Education, the Long Beach Unified School District, Los Angeles County, California.
Thank you, Axel. It's, it's really nice that we had so many wonderful teachers to honor earlier this evening and hear about not just what these teachers mean to our students, but what the students mean to those teachers. And we've heard about how it takes a special person to be a teacher because the work is a work of heart and it's not your typical job. So, to all the teachers out there, thank you so much for everything you do for us, for our students, for our communities, because as you've heard with the resolution, we need that. Our, our communities need that. So, thank you. Is there any other discussion on the Consent Calendar, any other? Yes, Dr. Benitez.
Can I just build on your comments?
Absolutely.
President Craighead, and you said it eloquently, so I'll add to that by saying, in one way, shape, or form, all of us are here because we believe that teachers can change the world. Right? And we have teachers here. Many of you, and the, and the references were made, Mr. Zaid, with how long you've been around in the district as well, and Jake Camarino as well. I firmly believe, as I know all of us do, that teachers can change the world, right? And we heard much of that today. And it's beautiful to have a resolution, but on the ground... But on the ground, in classrooms, and supporting classrooms each and every day in our district, teachers are being impacted by. And as importantly, teachers are impacting students' lives every single day. And I think we're here committed to, and upholding the testament to our belief in teachers and the profound role that they play in our lives, including my own. All right? And I know many of us, one of the easiest questions for me to answer, and I ask students all the time, which teachers have had an impact on you? And we use different words. What's the best teacher you've had? Coolest teacher? At the end of the day, we, I know that every single one of us can name at least one, oftentimes four, five, or six teachers. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other clarifications or questions, Ms. Lopez?
Yes, on item 14.3, just to confirm, what's the total number of emergency teaching permits we anticipate will be needed next school year?
So, Board Member Lopez, this is actually just an annual process that we submit in case that, once the year starts, we have a teacher in a position that they are not yet fully credentialed. We're able to cover that. Position, sorry, go ahead.
No, so we don't anticipate having to use this waiver?
Well, we, yes, at this point, we're still in the process of, you know, filling positions. So, we do this just as a way to cover for next year, this time.
Right. And I know I asked last year as well, but I just wanted to confirm if we, at this time, anticipated, again, any emergency permits for any of our teaching staff. Okay, but thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions or?
One more, just one more. On item 14.7, numbers 12 and 13, the contracts with Think Together for $224,024 and $11,400 to provide staff recruitment and employment services as needed for child development. I guess my question is, are we in need of child development teachers?
In both our divisions head start in CDC, we are unable to fill the vacancies that exist. And so, these are additional means for filling vacancies with support from an outside resource.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any more questions or anything, so I will ask our Board Secretary to take a roll call vote.
Thank you. Member Lopez?
Aye.
Member Otto?
Aye.
President Craighead?
Aye.
Member Benitez?
Aye.
Member Miller?
Aye.
And Student Member Agler, preferential vote?
Aye.
Thank you. That passes 5-0.
Thank you. And now we are at our staff report. It looks like Mr. Suarez is all set to lead us in our discussion on the LCAP.
Thank you, President Craighead. I knew this was gonna happen because the clicker is showing me some funny lights. So, Mr. Itzen, could you take a look at this while I introduce the presentation, please? And this is gonna be critical because our presentation tonight has many animations that is critical to the understanding of what we're projecting for our LCAP. But let me introduce our presentation by saying, last Friday, LBUSD posted its first draft of the LCAP. Since this is the first draft, there are areas that are incomplete and revisions should be expected. Tonight, we will go over the intentionality of how this draft was written, especially focusing on the alignment of the draft LCAP with board goals, superintendent's goals, strategic plan, Vision 2035, and state priorities. The first part of this presentation will be a quick recap of engagement priorities. The second part of this presentation will be about the sections of the first draft. The final part of this presentation will focus on the aforementioned alignment by using five slides to illustrate LCAP goals, metrics, and actions with the use of LCAP Goal Number 1 as a model for the other goals. Earlier today, we posted at www.lbschools.net/LCAP this presentation as a PDF and as a slide deck in English and Spanish. This presentation's modeling of LCAP Goal Number 1 is accompanied by a comprehensive slide deck in English and Spanish that follows the same model for LCAP's Goals 1 through 8. We intentionally posted the Google slide decks because, as you will soon see, the animations in the presentation give a better understanding of the alignment and, quite frankly, a better understanding of the draft. Before I continue, I would like to reintroduce you to the team. Dr. Lucy Salazar, Carmen Hernandez, Renee Arcas, George Tsai, and Viva Mogi. Both George and Viva will be presenting later. Thank you, Chris, for waiting to see if this works, and it does. Thank you. Let's start with the thought exchange priorities. Here is the exchange question. In addition to this question, respondents were asked to provide up to three priorities that they felt were especially important. The next slide represents the results. Here are the 10 priorities. These were ranked with the top rank by our respondents and community as school site allocations. That is the number-one community priority. Number 2 is literacy intervention. 3, care or wellness centers. 4, pupil support services. 5, quality core instruction. 6, English learner support. 7, black student achievement. 8, high school leadership academies and the college promise. 9, restorative justice. And 10, foster and homeless youth support. This slide should look familiar because we presented it last meeting. If you look at the entire first draft, it is with great pleasure that Goal 10 priorities will be funded in the LCAP. Let me say that again. The 10 community priorities, as listed in rank order that you see, all 10 are funded in the LCAP. In addition, I want to call your attention to Priority Rank 1, which is school site allocations. School site allocations are likely to be found in a majority of goals as sites look at their student needs to make decisions about how to spend their LCFF allocations. In addition, you will find school site allocations specifically listed as an action in the draft LCAP. It is Action 7.2 within Goal 7 of Equitable and Libertary District. Allocating LCFF funds to all schools is the truest definition of local control. These next few slides should look very familiar to you. They are the same slides from our last meeting. They describe the contents of the state LCAP template. Tonight, we use these slides to highlight what's in our first draft of the LCAP. Let's start with the Plan Summary. It provides context to the LCAP by giving information about the school district in general and about the performance and needs of students. This section has four areas to address. Wait, let me do that again. As you can see by the animated checkmarks, the first LCAP draft has three of the four sections of the Plan Summary drafted. The technical assistance section is not completed yet. The second section of the LCAP is, sorry, excuse me. The second section of the LCAP is engaging educational partners. This section gives a summary and a description of the process used with its consultation of the groups that you see on the slide. We have included engagement dates for educational partners in the draft LCAP. We will be updating this as we continue to work with our parent groups. In addition, we will be describing the process used for engagement as well as how the LCAP has been influenced by feedback. It is also of note that LBUSD has identified engagement as so important that the draft LCAP has a specific goal to further describe engagement as well as align with the strategic plan. You will find engagement as Goal Number 6 in the draft LCAP. And I'm gonna read the goal. LBUSD will cultivate authentic and inclusive partnerships between families, schools, and the community rooted in trust, respect, and recognizing parent and caregiver assets. The third section of the LCAP template is its most robust. This section delivers the goals, metrics, and actions. It also lists the state's priority or priority that the goal purports to address. In the LCAP, we have drafted the goals, metrics, and actions. Please note that the goal analysis section is not applicable until the 2025-26 LCAP. In this section, you will notice something that we feel is important in the readability of the draft. At the very beginning of each action, you will find a bulleted list of the programs and services before the narrative. Hopefully, this is a way to describe the service or program in a succinct way. The more robust description follows the bulleted list to give greater details about an action. Finally, the last section of the LCAP is increased or improved services for foster, English learners, and low-income students. This section has been substantially revised from the previous LCAPs. This section will give details to how the programs and services address the unique needs of these three subgroups of students. This section has not yet been drafted. Overall, the next step is to continue revising the LCAP. Since this is the first draft, there are no projected expenditures related to actions until the state releases its May budget revise. Many sections of this draft will be revised as a result of more information received through staff, community engagement, county review, and/or state guidance. As mentioned at the top of this time together, we plan to share the draft LCAP in a way that captures the goals with alignment in mind. You have seen these next two slides at the April 17 meeting. Dr. Baker will share her thoughts about the next two slides. Following Dr. Baker, we will hand it over to Viva Mogi to take us through a five-slide series representing LCAP Goal Number 1 as a sample of digging deeper into the alignment of this draft. Dr. Baker?
Thank you. I'm going to share my thoughts. How is that? Thank you, Jim. I did wanna pause and just really take a couple of moments to think about this opportunity that we're in around coherence and alignment. We're in a really pivotal, pivotal point and a really momentous opportunity for us. And that is, for the first time, we are entering into a local control accountability plan, the first of a multi-year plan with the board's goals and monitoring calendar in place, with a community vision that was harvested during a year of work with our community that you approved last summer, with a district emerging strategic plan, and with district goals for student outcomes that include academics and social-emotional development. And so, in this opportunity, I just wanna thank the team, all of us, all who sit and will be part of the presentation, and those who are not in the room today that are participating in the development of our strategic plan. When I think about this moment, and on the slide you see Vision 2035, the community's vision for reimagined education in LBUSD, this is an opportunity for us to operationalize what that vision really looks like. And so, in the establishment of goals, you're going to hear us talk about goals for all students. In Goal 1, we are talking about excellence for all students. And so, again, a connection to an excellence and equity policy that speaks to our high expectations for academic and social-emotional development for all students across the district that constitutes a significant amount of base funding so that every classroom, every school, has what it needs to be a school of excellence and to ensure that students have opportunities to achieve. And then the second part that you're going to hear about repeatedly is the supplemental aspect of our LCAP. And I'll speak to the separation of those two in a moment. So, this team has done considerable work, starting with the board goals and the vision, to think about how to represent that work in an LCAP that comes with incredible compliance-driven templates and requirements in that template for how that work is represented. And so, a different approach this year has been to enter in with the vision, board goals, and district goals for the areas of our student outcomes that are not part of the board's goals. Those are not forgotten areas. Those are areas that we focus in different ways than in the boardroom. And has really thought about what an LCAP would look like when we're actualizing those expectations for students and meeting the requirements of the state of California to put together a local control and accountability plan. So, Jim spoke to all of the materials that are available. And this was a great effort to make things as transparent as possible, to give the public an opportunity to respond, to interact with you all as their representatives and constituents, and to have all of those materials available to them. With a focus tonight on setting up a way to learn about the LCAP. And I think about, just pausing to think about the role of a governance team in an LCAP, the role of knowing deeply about the LCAP, its requirements, and what you want it to represent for the district, the role of developing goals and supports, which you have set the stage for in your board goals, encouraging engagement, which I have heard every time we talk about budget, you're asking about thought exchange, how to participate, how to get students involved, understanding data, which was deeply held by you all in getting to your board goals, which are driving the development of our LCAP, and understanding the data for all other students and how that shows up in the equity aspects of this plan. And then lastly, advocating about strategies and monitoring progress, which is part of your work as a governance team around student outcome-focused governance. So, I don't say these things to say that you're checking boxes, but when I think about the best practices for a governance team overseeing an LCAP, these are the six areas that are really best practices. And you are embracing each of them in the way that you're guiding, giving us input both in the boardroom, through your advisory group feedback, through one-on-one in your direction setting with me. And I just wanna express appreciation for all of the work that you're doing to be a part of this important process. In terms of the goals that are being set up with a focus tonight on Goal 1, I just wanna speak to the different aspects of these goals on Slide 12 and make a couple of statements about what I hope you will really think about tonight and also as you study the materials that the public has access to. The first five goals speak to something very important to us in our district. Goal 1, High Quality Learning for All, is, as I stated, excellence for all students. It is a base program ensuring that schools are staffed with highly qualified It is a base program, ensuring that schools are staffed with highly qualified professionals, that there are counselors, and social workers, and others in the building to support the academic and social-emotional development of all students. And it is the place that we hold high expectations for all students and fund the base of our district. I think sometimes the public thinks this is supplemental money only, and we're talking about beyond schools, or beyond the base of having classrooms and office staff and custodians, but our LCAP actually covers all of our base operations and then adds from there. And so, Goal One, that you're going to start to learn more about tonight with the materials that are prepared, Goal One represents all students and what we think of as excellence for all. The other aspects that are included in the materials, Goal Two, and Three, and Four, and Five, stick with the theme of high-quality learning, and our approach this year is to speak specifically to the supplements and additions for our high-need students that then reaches into the supplemental and concentration grant, representing our approach to equity. And what I mean when I say equity is that in addition to all of the base services, so all students are captured in Goal One, then we are wanting to be increasingly transparent and build in the way that we're building programs and services based on the unique needs of other groups of students, or of groups of our students who have been less historically successful. And so, you're going to see the emergence in the materials of programs and services and strategies that build on the all students. So, all students means all students, and in Goals Two, Three, Four, and Five, specific strategies, programs, and resources that enhance what all students in our district receive relative to high-quality learning. And then, in the next three areas of focus, engagement, equitable and liberatory district, transformative change, you see the three other themes that are a part of our strategic plan, the strategic plan that was developed because of the vision. And so, in the materials that are now available to the public and that you all have, but won't be addressed tonight, you should feel strongly that you see the elements of the core values and the portraits in those themes, and what is being funded both in the base program and the supplemental concentration grant, which are both a part of the LCAP. These are the strategic plans that connect the community's vision to action. And then, lastly, a new requirement this year that we're continuing to learn about its implementation that also comes with additional funding to specific schools in our district that is the accelerated learning for students in alternative or continuation schools. And so, while tonight's focus is on Goal One, to set up the mindset and the way to study the district's draft of its LCAP, all of the materials, as Jim has said, for the other, the draft materials are available for the other areas, but tonight's focus is on Goal One, so you have the way to study future presentations and materials that will come in Goals Two through Nine. And so, I'll pause for any questions for me, and then turn it back to the team to continue in our study and presentation of high-quality learning for all students. Are there any questions that you'd like to ask me?
Real quick one. There's a lot of stuff to read here and look at. When I saw the last one, Number Nine, it talks about accelerated learning for students in alternative or continuation schools, but I didn't have a chance to read all the, whether there were definitions for alternative and continuation schools in the ed code. Is it there?
Yeah, it's there, and actually, we can include it. Ms. Mogi can include that when she is presenting. It's also in the materials that are posted, so it's fine that you haven't gotten through all nine goals. That's, it's available to you for the next couple of weeks, and so, but I think we can define that in what's going to come tonight, and it is posted in the materials as well. Short statements that are based on ed code. Any other questions for me?
Dr. Baker, I'm wondering, as we go into the other parts of the presentation, and specifically when we take a deeper dive into Goal One, if you could also provide some contextual background, at whatever point you feel necessary, given that LCFF funds represent a big chunk of our district budget, and in this case, you know, the LCAP sort of Goal One, and sort of what our district thinking is with the illustrative examples in how we leverage additional funds, and specifically funds that potentially have more limited criteria, right? Restrictions and things like that.
I'm glad that you mentioned it. I will, tonight and in future presentations, and I'll also invite any of the team who's here that wants to make that comment. It takes me back to, and these are, this is publicly available information, the pyramid that we've used to describe and to illustrate the LCAP, and then what comes above it. And I say above it because it narrows into state grants and entitlements, federal grants and entitlements, and local grants and entitlements. That's important to know because as we move up that pyramid, each of those title grants gets more restrictive. And so, while the base program is general fund money for the district to run its entire district, our entire district, as we move up that pyramid, there are more restrictive funds, but I will do my best, and I appreciate the question because sometimes both the public and others who are watching wonder, well, why isn't there something funded in the LCAP? We're really fortunate to have a team that very well knows the strings attached to programs, and I say that respectfully, and works hard to maximize the restricted funds. For example, one example, we have been able to move many expanded learning opportunities in the form of tutoring and enrichment, things like Camp Oaks, Camp High Hill at Camp Oaks, summer learning experiences into ELOP funds, which are much more restrictive than LCAP. So, a member of the public might be thinking, well, why, if you want high-quality learning for all, why don't you have something like that in here? It is because we're also thinking about the best use and most strategic use of the more restricted funds, and I'll do my best to try to illuminate some of those examples as they become available, and I'll invite other staff to do the same. And if you know of something, any of you that want to say, where does this come in? I know we do this. How is that funded? We'll continue to have our Renee Arcus in the room, who can, like, usually, on a moment's notice, help us. But I also want to, when you ask those questions, I also want to create space for our staff to say, we can't answer that in the moment, but it's something that we'll bring back because I don't want people to feel totally put on the spot.
Renee, the baletas at the summer movie screening at Chavez from two years ago. What funds did we use for that? Come on, Lucky Rod, don't make it easy for Renee.
She said it was the PTA. Okay.
Thank you. Great setup, and thank you all. I will thank Jim also and pass to Viva Mogi.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Baker, for that. We are going to dive in into the example that we said that we will with our goals, but before we do, we just want to lay an overview of what it would look like. So, for each goal, for all nine goals, we actually made five slides for them. We're going to be reviewing Goal One so that the board and the audience can understand how our LCAP is drafted, and understanding how the LCAP is connected to our broader work. While we understand the slides without animation, there are slides without animation, we strongly encourage the audience to engage in the slides that are found on our website, as it can be interactive. If you also choose to have your draft LCAP next to you, it will be much more, like, comprehensive in terms of your understanding. So, you will see in the first slide, alignment. This is what Dr. Baker has just mentioned around the focus on the staff-facing strategic plan goals, the board and superintendent-focused goals, LCFF, which is part of what we're writing in our LCAP, known as the state priorities and state goals. We're also going to make connection to our Vision 2035 portraits. The second slide that you're going to see are our metrics to our goals. We will be sharing how the metrics are aligned with state-required goals, board goals, and superintendent goals. The third slide that you will see for each goal will share how the actions connect to the work through what we will, when we engage with the public and with our community, we share that, we don't say, here are the actions. We actually tell them, what kind of programs and services and roles do you think are most helpful and beneficial for you? And so, we will be giving examples in terms of when you see them in a school site of programs and services. Next, we will be going through, the fourth slide will share the community priorities that are aligned to the different actions listed in the LCAP. And then, the next one is, that's the one that, oh, I'm sorry, that's the one that Jim has shared earlier around our community priorities, and then we're going to make sure that it's aligned to our programs. The fifth slide that you'll see, we actually, just to note, we cut the pyramid, and it was, the pyramid is actually five slices, but this time around, because we are already talking about the LCFF, we have cut them out, and to share that these are the other funding sources that we're leveraging. So, when we say, when you see on the slide it says state, it will actually be other state funds, and then federal funds and local funds as well. So, before we dive in, it's going to be animated and interactive, and I just want to say that this was an opportunity for us to not only share with you, to the board, but to the audience as well, how much we all put the thought together, and I wanted to thank the team because we spent many, many different iterations on what it can look like, and we're also welcoming any kind of feedback if some of them are just a little still hard to understand. So, we're going to dive in. The first one, as we mentioned, is the alignment piece. Our goal is high-quality learning for all. This aligns with the strategic plan theme of high-quality learning for students, as you see. And then, the LCAP Goal One aligns with Board Goals One and Two, reading proficiency and reading acceleration, Superintendent Goals of 1.1, 1.2, and 3.1, which include academic growth in literacy and math, and increasing the percentage of graduates who are college and career-ready. Our LCAP is aligned with State Priority Two and Four. And then, lastly, Goal One aligns with our overall vision, seen in system portraits, excellence, equitable system focused on excellence for all, a culture of inclusion, well-being, and affirmation, flexible, high-quality learning, and real-world applications. The next slide that you'll see is here around the metrics. So, in our goal, we will be taking the following actions, which are known as programs and services. We are categorizing our programs and services into what we call actions, and they're listed as 1.1, 1.2, 1.3, and so on until 1.9, and connecting them to a metric. So, you will see the list of metrics that we have here. We have 14 metrics, and then the first nine are state-required metrics. 10 and 11 are board goals, and 12 to 14 are our superintendent goals. The next component that we're going to be talking about, like, as I mentioned, when we say actions, these can also be translated to the work we do in the form of programs and services. So, we'll be walking through what some examples of each items are, these examples we thought you would also recognize. The top three are funded as part of our base, the very bottom of the pyramid that we usually have. So, 1.1, pupil services are couns... Oops, sorry, are counselors, psychiatrists, and nurses. Instruction is teachers' school materials. Instruction-based, instruction-related services are our teachers on special assignments, also known as TOSA, principals, site, and office staff. And then, counseling support are in 1.4 as additional counseling support. 1.5 are literacy, library education programs. You can find them as librarians, media assistants, and materials. When we talk about literacy support, these are literacy specialists, literacy materials, OCIPD literacy coaches. 1.7, learning acceleration supports can look like Agile Minds and Other Curriculum, iReady, PSAT Core, which is also known as California Office of Reform Ed, Breakthrough Success Trainings, and AP exams. Examples of 1.8 CTE and link learning can look like school sites as pathway and small learning community coordinators, college and career specialists, student interns, and high school pathway allocations. The last with 1.9, our wellness centers are our social workers and wellness center materials. And then, now moving on to how these programs and services that we just saw right now are connected to the community priorities. When we engage with our community, we engage with them in this way. We don't talk about them based on our actions or our metrics, but engage with them based on our actions. So, that's why, I'm sorry, based on the programs and services, so that's why it's listed in this way. So, if you build off that, here is how our communities have aligned with our programs and services. The first, which was, I'm sorry, the second one that was ranked was literacy intervention, and you can see that in 1.5 and 1.6 with librarians, media assistants, and materials, literacy specialists, literacy materials, OCIPD literacy coaches, care and wellness centers, a social worker and wellness center materials. And in four, we had pupil services, and in there you could see it in both in 1.1 and 1.4. And quality core instruction will be in teachers in 1.3, I'm sorry, 1.2 and 1.3. Finally, we will explore leveraging other financial resources in our action. Please remember that the pyramid that we shared before was in five slices, but because the bottom two are LCFF funding, we just want to make sure that the, we only talked about the other financial resources, so it'll be local, federal, and other state funds. So, let's begin with our state funding sources to support our work in the LCAP, which are in 1.1, counselor, psychologist, and nurses. When we say other state funding, these, we leveraged state sped funding, and 1.8 is where we leveraged state CTE funding. Next, in our federal funding sources, most of these will be Title I, and then you can find them, I'm sorry, the one before will be 1.1, we're using also federal funding, so that's why it's layered. And then, the second time around we go, it's going to be all federal funding, and that will be mostly through our Title I funding, so in 1.1, 1.4, 1.6, 1.7, and 1.9. Lastly, when we leverage other grants to support work like our librarians, media assistant, and materials, for example, the local grants that we leverage here are the local rotary supports our library programs for us. So, by leveraging our other funding sources, we're able to accomplish the total of our Goal One, which is high-quality learning for all. And then, lastly, George is going to walk through how each of these slide decks are on our website and how you can really engage more in our LCAP goals.
Thank you, Viva. Random realization, we've been calling it the pyramid, isn't it? A triangle? All right. Well, anyways, I'll still call it the pyramid because that's what we're familiar with. So, with Viva's tutorial and explanation of Goal One, we hope you'll take this time now to access the other resources available to you on the district website. So, there's the comprehensive slide deck that now includes the additional or the other eight proposed goals that align with the state priorities, the strategic plan, your goals, Dr. Baker's goals, and Vision 2035, and it follows the same format that we just went through together with Viva. So, while a PDF version is available, we do encourage that people utilize the slide deck that's also available in order to take advantage of that animation that helps add the clarity to the various alignments and the aspects of each goal. Also, at this website, you'll see the LCAP's first draft that Jim was talking about. The document follows the state's required format and order that we shared with you during the April 17 meeting. And while this draft doesn't have the dollar figures, and other sections are still being developed, it does help provide those seeking more details, information beyond just these slide deck summaries. And, one last resource that we'd like to highlight tonight is that additional opportunity for feedback, for the community to ask questions, provide input, and comment, once they've had that opportunity to review the contents of the slide and of that first draft. And, of course, you get all this in one spot. What spot is that? LBschools.net, L-C-A-P. Nice job, everyone. Okay, so, with the community engagement efforts of Phase 1, and the ongoing communication updates and draft introduction of Phase 2, we will be moving on to the final phase by refining the LCAP and responding to community feedback before requesting approval in June. So, thank you for your continued support and engagement through this LCAP journey. We will stick around for additional questions.
Okay, does somebody want to start us out with questions or comments about the presentation? No, nobody wants to start? Well...
No, no, no substantive questions, just the big, "Thank you," and kudos to the team. I think, I see two things in the presentation, and I, I'm not understanding 100% of everything yet either, Mr. Otto. I understand the presentation, but all the substance and background behind it.
I do.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm speaking to the presentation. Clarity is perfect. I think the monster lift, part of the monster lift that you all did was in also making sense of our last board meeting conversation and discussion. So, thank you. Now, I know how I have to say things, because they, every, 100% of everything we talked about is here. So, kudos to the team. So, I do have one question around budget, given the, the super tight turnaround, Ms. Arquus, that we have from the May revise, to, you know, having a finalized proposed budget for us to approve, I should say, for us to take action on in June. So, can you just kind of give us a sense, because I know we don't start at zero, but also, we're not 100% definitively sure what that May revise is going to look like either. So, can you just kind of walk us through what happens from that May revise to the next board meeting, where we, out of compliance, need to take action?
Sure. The good news is, like you said, we don't start at a zero budget. We know our base, we know our operations, and a lot of the things that we talk, actually, everything that we talk about tonight is based on expenditures. So, we've made these plans with an estimated budget in mind. The May revise comes out and is often a structure change to revenue, so we'll spend some time talking at the June board meeting, when we bring the budget to fruition, about what changes that the state made to our revenue resources. But because of good planning with the district and the way that we're organized, we're going to have our expenditures kind of tied down in what we want to do, based on feedback from the community, feedback from staff, feedback from these meetings, in order to put those into action pretty quickly. My budget team is myself and several other people in my department, we're working, you know, really hard to get these things organized and get these things out there. So, the base of the budget is out there, and we'll look forward to hearing in the May revise, any changes.
And I would add, this is a real benefit of having such healthy reserves in the school district, that we have reserves to rely on, to the extent that the May revise yields less revenue for the district. We don't have to turn around and make dramatic cuts on a dime. So, that's the, tho- those reserves provide us some cushion in the event of revenue drops, and when we have such tight turn- turnaround, when we, we, so we don't have to materially change the expenditures due to decreases in revenue.
Thank you. I'm going to sneak in a quasi-request, Dr. Baker. So, priority, community priority in Action 8, high school leadership academies, and, drum roll, please, college promise. So, it's been a while since we had a presentation on the promise, sort of had a continuance of that conversation. A few months ago, you shared with the board that there were some workings on updating, reimagining. I know that some things are still not finalized, but some other things are. My, 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 my understanding is that something is happening with this upcoming academic year in the college promise. So, my wondering is, when can we get an update and/or continue the conversation, given two points, and I'll bring it back to why I'm raising it here in the LCAP process? Almost all of our Board Goals, many of our superintendent goals and strategic plan priorities, in one way or another, touch and shape on the college and career readiness aspects. And a big part of that is our A through G, right? Specifically, with one of our Board Goals focusing on, one, improving A through G completion for black students, all students and, black students, by also eliminating our gap, right? A compliance component of the LCAP is that we engage with our educational partners. But, but it is unique in the sense that it's more of an internal facing conversation. And I worry that, in the internal facing conversation, it often is shaped by and impacted by the other two institutional partners that we have here. So, as an example, not for today, this, that's why I said, this is, this is, this is for, you know, upcoming. If, for whatever reason, Cal State Long Beach decides, because of enrollment, or because of budget, or because of impaction, that it is going to raise its eligibility index, and we're putting forth all these efforts to A through G completion, particularly for black students, but also eliminating equity gaps, but we still have the concern around moving goalposts, that on the one hand, we can be successful in achieving our goals and strategic priorities, but they're contingent on some of the institutional partner conversations, whether it's LBCC or CSUB, or now say the system-wide CSU, right? If, as a scenario, the state happens to change its A through G requirements, or its A through G eligibility index, I, I have, I do have concerns that then we become reaction, we, we try to respond in fulfilling our commitments and this promise, without being clear on what are some of the external considerations that then impact our internal. So, I say this because it was lovely to see Carmen and Lucy at Cal State Long Beach yesterday with parents. I am almost 100% sure that something about how are their children, you know, what do they have to do to attend Cal State Long Beach comes up. I know we still have our fifth graders visit, right? So, not for today, but it is a priority here. It's part of our Board Goals. You know, it would, I think it would be important for us to have some opportunity to continue that conversation. Thank you.
Well, and continuing that theme a little bit, I, I think that it's timely to, not in a wholesale way, but to revisit the Long Beach College Promise, and maybe think about making the connection much more strongly with the community colleges as a way of achieving that I, it wasn't that long ago when it was, it was so easy to get, go to a community college for a year or two, and then transfer to UCs, or transfer to CSUs. And I think that's dissipated a little bit, but, and I know it's a tough sell to say, "Oh, you know, we're going to send you to a community college," and I'm not prejudicing what, what the outcome would be, because it's a different world post-pandemic, and how things go, although I, I know you get a great education at the community college level. But, what, what I've been listening for is a commitment of the three, the CSUs and the CCs and the Unified Tool District, about how to address this without making it the biggest thing in the world. I think that the answer is not going to be waiting for Cal State Long Beach to say, "Oh, no, you know, we're going to, anybody that wants to take psychology can," because that's just not going to happen. There just aren't enough slots. So, but it's something that needs to be, be going on right now, because I don't think there's a solution without a major reconsideration of how that's working. And in the meantime, it feels, I won't use that word, but it feels like people are relying on it, and on the Long Beach College Promise, in ways that, that it won't be able to, they won't be able to achieve, not through any fault of their own, they'll do a great job. So, yeah, the question is how to, to do that in a gentle way, but an effective and efficient way, because we've got a great system in California. It's just a question of, of doing it, making it all work together. And it, it used to, it started off working together, but it's, it's not broken, it's, it needs to be worked on, and everybody needs to be at the table.
We definitely have progress points to share that are happening at different paces with Long Beach City College and Cal State Long Beach. And so, part of what I can think about is how to, how for our team to represent the increased in dual enrollment while students are in high school. You know, we're going to graduate our first group of students from Browning that will graduate with their AA, as well as their high school diploma, which, that, you know, that's a small group of students right now, but it speaks to building systems between Long Beach Unified and Long Beach City College. There have been great enhancements to testing out patterns of dual enrollment while students are in their, their pathways. And then, there has been movement in thinking about our students going directly to Cal State Long Beach. So, what I'm going to think about is, rather than a broad update on the promise at large, I'll say, maybe a more granular update on the pace of change, and some of the ways that our team has been engaged with institutions collectively, but separately, and what that, what that change is looking like, at least for now. And then, perhaps there's an opportunity to, to get deeper updates from within each institution. So, thanks for the prompts.
Anybody else? Well, I have a, I don't know, I guess, a, a comment or wondering, on the community engagement part of it, when I looked through the LCAP, I, I saw that there, there were different parts of the community engagement that were listed, like the thought exchange and focus group for students. And what I didn't see reflected was an opportunity for parents or community members to attend a, an in-person community meeting, and I don't know if that's, you know, scheduled, or if it just has, you know, hasn't taken place yet. But, when I look back at our Vision 2035, and our, what the board did to gather information from the public, we met with people in person, and it gives those people an opportunity to have a two-way conversation, and I think, you know, maybe, maybe I missed that part, but, other than the thought exchange, I didn't see where, where that was reflected, where we're going to have an in-person opportunity with the community.
So, thank you for the, for the question. So, good evening. So, on page 24 of the draft currently, we've been able to list the engagement that we've, no, we've engaged, sorry, redundancy, but yes, these are, these have been the opportunities to, to be with our community, not only in focus groups, but also with some of our parent groups. And so, you'll see that we've had an opportunity to meet in person with DCAK and D-LAC and Iona, as well as our Sankofa Parent Village has had an opportunity. And so, yeah, so we've had some engagement in person with parent groups, and we list our engagement opportunities on our webpage, and so, we invite, we're an open page, or an open invite to all our community to attend DCAK and D-LAC, as well as Iona. I don't know if you see that, do you?
I, yes, I was looking on the right side, I missed the Sankofa one, because I, anyhow, but I am thankful that you're giving us an opportunity to see engagement that will be coming soon, also things that have already taken place, and I'm, I'm happy to know that there are opportunities for people to speak to us in person, because not every, well, you know, it's good to have that thought exchange online, because not everybody can come in person, but not everybody likes to give their opinions kind of in an anonymous way, like that they want to have that, you know, personal interaction. Some people are people-people. And, so, I'm very happy to see that we're doing this, because that shows, that shows that we are taking a multi-layered approach to gathering information and input from our stakeholders, and, and that fits right in with our, you know, our, our, our vision, our board guardrails, everything. So, thank you for addressing that.
And just to add to that, this is the list of dates and places that we've been. There will be a much, in the second draft, there'll be a much more robust process description for each of these. So, that's coming soon.
And then, if somebody wanted to know about upcoming opportunities, where would they go?
They would go to our website. Yes, www.LBschools.net/LCAP. And we have our calendar there as well.
Thank you.
And again, and it's another plug for our community to, it's not too late to share feedback. We have the draft, and we also have a Google form, as well on that webpage, where, after reviewing the, the draft of the LCAP, that they can share their, their, their feedback with us, and we take it all.
I have a quick question. So, first of all, thank you for, for the presentation, and for committing to funding the, the 10 priorities, community priorities. And I guess my question is, do we have plans, or where in the plans or in a vision do we see our accelerated magnet programs? Or do we?
We have plans for accelerated magnet programs?
So, in the funding, in the vision that, that, that you have, perhaps, of the district, where do you see us moving with magnet and accelerated programs, magnet specialized programs? I know that's a little outside of what we're talking about, but we are talking about visions, we are talking about funding. Is that anywhere in plan?
We don't, I mean, based on Vision 2035 and our strategic plan, we don't have any plans to expand specialized programs, and that's based on our data over time, on student selection, but that falls under curriculum and pathways, really. It's not part of a, it's not part of the LCAP itself. But specifically, we don't have plans to expand specialized programs. We, we don't, we don't call them magnets, but, and because all of our pathways across all of our schools have an A through G course sequence that's combined with the CTE completer sequence, they all have AP classes, so they can all meet the state's goals and our district's goals and the board goals in every single school with the
goals and the board goals in every single school with the course sequence. We have done a lot of work, and this is part of the strategic plan, to look at the course sequences and perhaps clean them up so that we ensure that every student in every pathway has the course sequence more defined for them. And so that has been the work of, of ensuring that those pathways and course sequences allow every student to meet the state's goals and the board and our district goals. So, yeah.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I have one tiny little suggestion for the next, either, you know, draft or whatever's coming next. On, on page 13 of the LCAP, there's information on the dashboard, but I, and I, and I, maybe I'm mistaken here, but I didn't see a key as to what the colors indicated. I mean, there, there was.
Is color on the presentation?
Yeah, I know, I know. And yeah, I thought I would mention that for your benefit, but I didn't, I didn't see a key as to what the colors are associated with. I could have missed that, I don't know, but that's just a little.
We'll add a key, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anything else? Okay. Thank you very much. As Dr. Benitez mentioned, a lot of work is represented in this, in the presentations, in the slide deck, in, in the work. And I know that you have so many teams working on this and I look forward to hearing from all of our teams again. I don't remember when the workshop was exactly, but it was so wonderful to hear from people that we don't ordinarily hear from and also those that we do. So we look forward to, to that and also discussing the budget more when we have actually amounts because this draft doesn't include amounts since we don't know because we're waiting on the governor's may revise. And so that was another little thing to mention was that amounts are not listed in here. So now we were, now we are at reported board members and we're going to start with Axel.
First off, I would just like to shout out the former assistant principal at Powell, Ms. Gruntz, for her service at Powell K through eight. She was my principal since I was five years old and my favorite memory of her was I was buying Spensels. And for those of you guys that don't know what Spensels are, they're pencils made from scented newspaper and they were just for $1. So meeting her today and seeing her again was truly a full circle moment. And I would also just like to highlight some things that are happening at Jordan. Jordan's HOSA chapter has placed top five in nursing assistance and we will be headed to Texas in June to compete at internationals for the first time in Jordan HOSA history. Also, Jordan has hosted its annual denim day with Interval House, raising awareness against sexual assault and harassment through pep rallies and booths that students were able to participate and learn more from. The Ames valedictorians, Brian Rosales, Helen Padilla, Yuralti Fonseca, and I recently attended a meeting on behalf of the Ames Academies, to the academies at the Capital Conference and California Partnership Academies throughout the state, held a meeting with our legislators. And in our case, we spoke to the representative of Mike Gibson, Dr. John Schaefer, about the importance of career technical education funding and how this career technical education and the California Partnership Academies changed the lives of many of our students. Last week, the superintendent advisory committee raising student voices on participation meant to engage in a project about the areas of growth that the district could work on and offer suggestions on how to work on these areas. Lastly, in honors of Teachers Appreciation Week being next week, I would like to take a moment to express my gratitude to the following teachers. Ms. Callis, the Ames Pathway Lee teacher for always giving 110% of herself in order for the pathway and students to succeed. Ms. Green, the Activities Director at Jordan for hosting a wide range of successful on-campus events promoting the sense of belonging here at Jordan. Ms. Valdivius, the Yearbook Teacher for capturing all the wonderful moments at Jordan High School and her unwavering support throughout the high school, through my high school journey. I would like, also like to give an honorable mention to my AP government teacher, Mr. Brendan Grunison, for winning the Aquatic Capital of America's Co-Coach of the Year after just one year as the head aquatics coach at Jordan. I would also like to thank Ms. Bowley Blair, Mr. Carter, Ms. Markeen, Mr. Hodel, Mr. Larson, Ms. Williams, Ms. Mead, Ms. Gleason. And all of these teachers have played a very important part to where I am now. So I appreciate all of their contributions to this, to not only just me, but to all of their students across their journey as teachers. Thank you.
Very nice, Axel, very nice. Mr. Miller, you have to follow that.
Give me one second here. Well, first off, I wanted to thank the team for the LCAP presentation. I didn't say it before, as I, you know, we've had so many conversations about budget, not only from a 50,000-foot level when we're talking about how we fund the continuation of certain programs and certain systems, but we've also been talking about how we support our priorities as a district. And so I just appreciate the level of attention that that team has put into making it plain. I was teasing with them in the back, maybe a little over explaining sometimes, but all the same, in the same token, it's important. And then also just thanking our superintendent for the level of detail that they go into and the level of, I guess, support that I can tell that they have when it, when we're talking about some of our vulnerable populations in our district. Of course, not necessarily just vulnerable, but students that have underperformed, students that have fallen between the cracks and making sure that we uplift those young men and young women. And so I'm very appreciative of seeing how we're prioritizing them in our budget, but prioritizing them in our celebrations, prioritizing them in our presentations, et cetera. And so this is just another one of those pieces where I'm very, very appreciative of the heightened level of recognition to those that can definitely use the support. So thank you. And I'm looking forward to seeing the second draft where it's more complete and we can talk a little bit about the metrics that are in place, et cetera. So anyway, went off on a tangent because I really wanted to highlight an experience that went on in our district just a few weeks ago. And I've heard nothing but good things about it and I wanted to make sure that I highlighted it today. And that is the LBUSD Black Literary Society. For those who heard about the program, it was a cohort of about 26 students, right? And so the program provided black students with an opportunity to read and learn from a rich history of black education and literature. The district partnered with Harvard professor Dr. Jarvis R. Givens to support Black Literary Society students in their academic, intellectual, cultural development through a reading of his book, School Close, a collective memoir of black students' witness. Dr. Givens visited Long Beach in the fall of 2023 to kick off the Students Black Literary Society Program and then collaborated on the development of a college tour that centered the text students were reading as they visited HBCUs like Howard, Hampton, Bowie, Virginia State, but they also got to visit Harvard. The students also visited the African American Museum, History Museum, and the Smithsonian as just some of the exciting opportunities that they got to take part in. The students were immersed in African American history as well as teaching and learning. I just really think that when we think of our system and our core value of providing them with the information or the aptitude to go on and be great adults, I would be remiss and I continue to harp on that we also create experiences. So that's why I'm such a big advocate of things like Camp High Hill, because I think that it's a collaboration of education and experience. That's why I'm such a big advocate of the arts, right? Because there's undertones of music and science and it's mixing an experience with something that is going to be part of their everyday knowledge someday. And I think of experiences like the one that the district created for these young men and young women with getting to visit Harvard, but while also mixing culture and literature. And so I just really, really am impressed with this great opportunity that we were able to create. And I would hope that the district, though we're going to be in some tough financial times over the next few years and we're aware of that, will continue to consider the great experience we create as a district as we also work to improve the aptitude of our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez.
Yeah, thank you for that, Mr. Miller. We had several of our public speakers today. Well, one specifically referencing, and putting us to task, why don't we learn about this stuff through our curriculum, right? But several of our speakers referenced the, I would say crucial indispensable role that people of color, women, minoritized populations have played, not just as a part of this country, but fundamental to the institutions of this country. Another one of our speakers referenced the Filipino and Latino agricultural experience, right? So, cool, we talked about Dolores Huerta and Cesar Chavez, but there's also Larry Itliong and Philip Veracruz writing a whole history of labor struggle, collective labor struggle, references to May Day today, right? Today is the day where we celebrate, how about this, the novel idea of an eight-hour workday.
Well, that's not happening for the staff that's sitting here in the room, but.
But many, if not all, of the staff in here were in positions where we got breaks, we got lunch breaks, we have benefits, right? That, that's not a, all of a sudden magically appeared one day. There's a long history of struggle that, so thank you for that, Mr. Miller. And again, thank you for, to the, to the public speakers for referencing some of the pillars of what our public education system was founded on and what we continue to strive for. So yes, we need to learn more, hear more, have more experiences because these are not in the abstract, right? They're fundamental to who we are as a country. I want to give, I want to express gratitude and appreciation to the Whittier School community. They hosted this past weekend another retreat-ish event in partnership with community partners like ALC seven, Long Beach Forward, Days Long Beach. Now they're going on, I think this is the third year of these wonderful community building, community engagement events. So big shout out to the Whittier community for having another retreat-ish event this past Saturday. Dr. Brown and I got invited to a Safe Passages kickoff at Franklin this coming weekend. Again, an illustrative example of community, the city, and community partners coming together around the assets and needs of the Franklin School community. So I'm looking forward to that. Many of the same organizations, I think it was Days Long Beach that invited us, right? I think they're one of the lead organizations in that part of town, but there's, there are many other examples of the, of the work that's going on with regard to safety in our schools and communities. We have a big next Friday, next Thursday night, Crypt Camp. Ah, Mr. Itson, ah, there you go, perfect, right on cue. So this is a free movie screening, again, another illustrative example of our district and community coming together for a special LBUSD screening of an award-winning documentary, Crypt Camp, next Thursday, Jordan, 6 o'clock. If you're not there, you're not cool. And we actually have the filmmakers that will be there for a discussion. So wonderful opportunity. Takes me back to Mr. Zaid's move with Radical. And we actually referenced that. We said, we want ours to be that cool, right? And we, we, so thank you, Dr. Brown, for your leadership in that as well and to our community partners. And I don't think they'd be embarrassed to say. Cindy Soto, if you're watching, keep, keep coming, keep holding us accountable. And of course, Long Beach Forward, and I know, I know the person at Long Beach Forward is not going to want me to name them by name, but Long Beach Forward is also a partner with us in this. So RSVP, go either on the scan, the code, QR code, and/or lbusdschools.net/cryptcamp. Did I get that right, Mr. Itson? Yes, forward slash crypt camp. Yes, thank you, sir. And teacher appreciation covered that. That's my report for tonight, President.
Thank you, Mr. Otto.
I, I want to devote most of what I'm saying to, a thank you to the staff for the reports that we got. When I got them last Wednesday, I read, I read through them very quickly and I thought, I, I get it. And the questions that we raised at the last meeting about how could you present all this information and address the things that we were particularly interested in had been answered clearly. And when I got a chance over the weekend to more thoroughly dig into what was there, I, I thought, it really is all here. And I had two epiphanies. The first epiphany was, so this is understandable. This is all part of something. And when I say part of something, it's, it's a, it's a different way of looking at what we do. I remember when, and I've mentioned this before, when Juan and I started, tried to get information from the community and had a meeting, 30 people showed up, we listened to what they had to say and we thought, well, we're beginning to do the right thing. And a couple of weeks later, we had another meeting and we had about 30 people and about 20 of them were about the same from the first meeting. So we said to each other, I think, gosh, there are 60, we're in 60,000 students here, how come we're only getting 20 of them? And of course, what we then did was this 2035 plan, which so involved not just the people that participated, but the, the community really. I mean, the students were, and I remember thinking, well, but, you know, these kids are going to graduate and all, no. This sets up a culture of, of participation, of knowing, of, of speaking. It's, it's not only student voice, but behind it is some parent voice and it creates a culture that that stuff is really important. And when I had a chance last night to, to really look through this stuff even deeper, it's, it's really, it's a magnificent body of work. I, it's going to, it's going to take a lot more to completely understand it. I don't think I ever will, but I don't think I have to. I think that we're on a good path. So that's epiphany number one. Epiphany number two, I don't know whether this is true or not, but I, what I see in this kind of stuff is the death of categorical programs. So for so long, it seemed the way we did things would say, oh, let's slap some money at that and, and do it and the state would run it. And, and this is the answer to that. And I don't see categoricals coming back. If we can continue to do this, well, I, we have work to do, but this is a great foundation and I'm very, very appreciative of that. So that's the, the, the thank you and the kudos for this work. The one local thing that I will share, and I'm a little biased about this, is that the Wilson High School track team not only did a great job recently, but they, they said they had the nation's best time in the four-time 800-meter race. And I know that because my two grandsons were part of that team. That was really, really fun. We, we saw them in the more leagues at Poly last week and it is so, I mean, when, I, I was honored to have Lisa Ullmer be here tonight to do this because she's really been the heart and soul at the district level of athletics. And with all the things that are going on in athletics right now, I just don't know what to think about it. This NIL stuff and, you know, the guy who's playing quarterback on Monday is at a different high school on the next Monday and I just don't know how that is. But I know the history of athletics in Long Beach and how important it's been. it's been to our community. So, but, so, so it was really, really special to watch these kids be very successful and continue things and sit in the stands with people that I hadn't met before that were the parents of other kids and, and get to know them as well. So it's been a good, good couple of weeks. That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez.
Well, I attended Los Cerritos Elementary Schools Open House after our last board meeting. And I really had a great time visiting like the classrooms and speaking with the parents and staff there. I definitely want to thank the teachers and administration for such a successful evening. And a special shout out to Mr. Quinn, who had an impressive turnout in his classroom, but he still took the time to, to welcome me and to spend time speaking with me. Today is National Principals Day. And I want to acknowledge and thank the principals in the district for their leadership, dedication, and commitment to our schools. They're often the first ones to arrive at a school and the last ones to leave. And so thank you, principals, for creating an environment where students can thrive. And then finally, I'd like to congratulate our seniors who were recently accepted to colleges. In particular, I want to congratulate our student board member, Axel, for being accepted to, and listen to this, Cal State Long Beach, Cal State Dominguez Hills, Cal State Bakersfield, Cal Poly San Luis Obispo, Loyola Marymount, USC, UCI, UCSD, Drexel University, UC Berkeley, University of Pennsylvania, UCLA, Go Bruins, Yale, and Columbia. Felicidades, Axel. I am not surprised. You shine here and you will shine wherever you go. And I know that whatever college you choose to go to, they will be very lucky to have you and you will be a gift to them. So with that, I do want to ask you, Axel, so, and go Jordan, because these are the kind of students that Jordan is producing. Have you committed? Where do you plan to commit?
I would like to give my verbal unofficial announcement of committing to Columbia University.
There we go.
So just thank you for...
Conditional, conditional.
And I also want to take, take this time to thank you for your contributions, for being a voice, a much-needed voice here, and for the students. Thank you, Axel, and congratulations.
Boy, now I have to follow that. That's what I get. Well, first I want to mention a special event at Twain. It was Literacy Night. And the PTA sponsored this event. They had a giant Scrabble game out on the lawn. They had a thing that was like a cakewalk. This may be going back too far for most of you, but the music, it's kind of like musical chairs, except the music plays and when you stop, the, whatever you land on, you, anyhow, and they had words and stuff. It was like sight words. They had workshops for parents. They had food trucks. Everything was geared towards literacy. They had a display where it was book covers. And then when you opened the book, it had, oh, well, on the cover it was a certain book. And then when you opened it, was the teacher who, who's book, that was the, it's getting late. That's their favorite book. You open it, oh, that's that teacher. That teacher likes that book. Anyhow, a lot of great fun and a wonderful idea because there's something for everybody. It was, you know, activities for the students, learning activities for the, for the parents, and then treats and everything. And then also, our, our Twain principal mentioned to me about Saturday School, and it's something that we don't hear about a lot, but at, at Twain, they have about 60 students that are enrolled in Saturday School right now. And, and it's a 12-week, do I have that right? 12-week course. And the kids that are participating are very enthusiastic. The families appreciate it. So just another wonderful thing that's happening in the district. Let's see. Also, I want to thank, well, I, I went to the open house at Marshall. They had theirs a little bit later than, than the other middle schools. But I want to thank all the teachers and staff and principals, everybody who creates a welcoming environment for families and community members to come and see the classrooms and visit. I, I know that involves a lot of extra work, so I just want to thank everyone for doing that. And then I want to congratulate Long Beach City College on creating, on the creation and grand opening of the Black Student Success Center. And that was a wonderful celebration that they hosted. I don't know, I think it was last week. And it's, it's a place on campus for black excellence. And it was really cool inside. They have pictures of, you know, prominent black people, including our local heroes like Rex Richardson, Doris Topsey Elverd, people that we will recognize who are local to us. And then lastly, I just want to mention that next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. And I know that a lot of our schools have parent-teacher organizations that do something organized, where they do something special for the teachers. Maybe they'll provide, you know, coffee in the morning or some that go a little bit beyond that, maybe provide a more of a breakfast thing or a lunch or something like that. But what we heard tonight from Lisa Ulmer was about a student who wrote a note. And it occurred to me that a small gesture like that doesn't cost a lot of money. It's, you can just use a, you know, scrap of paper or whatever. But that small gesture of just writing a note to a teacher, letting a teacher know how much they mean to you, how much they've meant to you, or maybe something special they did, how they made you feel welcome in their classroom, anything like that, a small note of appreciation would go a long way and be very meaningful. If you're a parent and you have a teacher that's done something for, for your child that you want to make sure that they're acknowledged for, I think a note is, is a wonderful idea. And next week is the time to do it because it's Teacher Appreciation Week.
Those notes get read at retirement celebrations by those very teachers.
They do. And you can see the effect that it, that note wasn't for me, but it had an effect on me. So I know that they are very meaningful. So that's my report. Dr. Baker.
Thank you. I'm, I would like to continue the expression of gratitude for our teachers. When I think about my personal gratitude for our teachers, there is no thanks that is enough for the work of our teachers. Teachers are the number one factor in influencing student success. That comes in the form of academic development and also social emotional development. And so I cannot underscore enough and just thank, personally thank our teachers enough for what they do and the magic that happens in their classroom each and every day. So I hope there are wonderful celebrations our district will be a part of. Teachers can check their inboxes the week of Teacher Appreciation. We're going through our email this year to offer something, an extra treat to teachers that they will find during the week of Teacher Appreciation Week. Couple of other celebrations. We have two teams that have competed, actually had to compete against each other in drone soccer. And Cabrillo placed first, Sato placed second in the US Drone Soccer Competition, which, get this, in October, the Cabrillo team will be going to Hong Kong to compete in the international soccer competition on behalf of the United States. That is...
By the way, we're going to win in Hong Kong.
And special recognition to the teachers. Many of you have heard the names, Ken Fisher, you've attended events at Cabrillo, but he has hosted for women in STEM. He is a force to be reckoned with on the Cabrillo campus and the impact that he has on our young women, but on students at large at Cabrillo. And then Albert Gao, teacher who started drone soccer at Sato, was actually recently awarded one of our Vision 2035 stars for his work. And I love knowing that the two of them collaborate on behalf of students as well. Too bad they had to compete against each other. That doesn't seem, doesn't seem right. But two other celebrations. This is Asian American and Native Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We have heard about some of the, our local, our people in our local community that can be celebrated. And I know our schools are going to be celebrating that throughout the month. And then lastly, in addition to honoring teachers, on Friday is School Lunch Hero Day. And so our nutrition staff will be celebrating nutrition in different ways. And there are many ways that students, parents, and other community members can thank those who behind the scenes make sure that our children have nutritious meals and our young people and older students have nutritious meals, have a friendly face serving them, and really think about what is an important aspect of what happens in our, across our district each and every day, that there is a nutritious, multiple nutritious meals for our students. So thank a lunch, a lunch person, a lunch hero. If nothing else, just say thank you for making that happen for, for them. National Principal Appreciation Day was already a celebration, so I'll close with just thank you to all of you for the way you've engaged in the LCAP process and for continuing to lead the way in governance for our community.
Thank you. I have a quick question about drone soccer. Are we talking about co-ed teams? And I, I have the confirmation on that. So co-ed teams, this is incredible. I love that, by the way. Anyhow, this concludes the business of our meeting tonight. Thank you for sticking with us. And, and our next regular meeting is Wednesday, May 15. So without any objection, I will adjourn this meeting.